I go out with four. So that takes the lead. So I'm constantly looking at a lot of ground applications. I write, well, I report to all federal funding, state funding, so also. So you have six places to roll with y'all.
Do you remember if he works for the municipal or if he worked? He's in the game. On the flip side. He may be with the law. His dad wasn't a country. Probably why he would stay away from it.
I sent you a lot of email today.
You did. I've been at my computer all day. I send them on my phone.
All right. I need some action.
How you doing, sir?
How are you?
I got a long one.
How long will it be?
With everybody? They get their own.
There you go. You got it.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm not. I need to shave that. The, um, I've been thinking.
Can you read a little more color? Right now.
I know. I was trying to lean out and do it.
Over here. Just to your right.
I can't just see Mr. McGinnis. Mr. McGinnis. Stop, stop, stop.
That's okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is 6 o'clock PM. Your meeting of the Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order for June 7th, 2022. We now give the Florida Councilman Parker to welcome this evening's deliver of the invocation.
Thank you, Brother President. I'd like to welcome Pastor Laura Kelsey from the First Presbyterian Church. She will bring us our invocation this evening.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for being here with us in the midst of this chamber this evening. In all the many ways, we ask you to guide this time of meeting. We ask you, Lord, to be with the hearts and the minds of all who are gathered here today, that we may have an open heart and that we may have a weight lifted upon us so that we may hear with clarity what others are saying and allow you, O Lord, to direct our thoughts and give us clarity in the decisions that we make and the thoughts that come to mind. We ask you, Lord, to be with all those who have concerns upon their hearts this evening about the issues that are at hand, and we ask you to show them what they need to see so that we can be one community gathered together as the Pontiac we are supposed to be. Guide us, Lord, and unite us as one body. Be with all our council people this night and with all the citizens of Pontiac, that they may feel the strength, they need the courage to say what needs to be said, and the vision to move forward in the direction we should go as one community. We ask this, in the almighty peace that you bring to us all. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will keep standing for a moment of silence after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence as we read the names of those that we know our community has lost in recent days. Thelma Anderson, Donald Arson, Benny Ruth Clay, Evelyn Brill Edwards, Frank Brinson, Robert Crump, Tamara Crutcher, Virginia Davidson, Michael Gomair, Frances Jones, Frankie Louise Lee, Peggy Marshall Helm, Tracy Mills Smith, Kalen Minton, Marvin Ortiz Jr., Bertha Mae Simpson, Selwyn Trent Williams, Damon Wright, the shooting victim at North Hill Farms, Mr. Raymond Davis, the motorcyclist, only 24, killed in a car accident in Pontiac in recent days, the woman who perished in a house fire on Mohawk Road, and we keep in our prayers the man in critical condition, suffering severe burns at a gas station on Huron Street in Pontiac. Please let us have a moment of silence together as a community and also remembering the names of those in your family and your neighborhoods you've lost as well. Thank you. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGuinness.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established, can I please have a motion to authorize the excusing of Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford from the meeting for personal reasons?
Some support.
It's been moved by Rutherford and it's been seconded by Carrington. Oh, I'm sorry. We're talking about Rutherford. It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Carrington to authorize the excusing of Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford from the meeting for personal reasons. Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Some support.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Carrington. That motion is before us. Any discussion, questions, amendments? We'll proceed accordingly presently, but when we get to a discussion item, if the legal counsel that the administration has invited hasn't arrived yet, we may postpone that. Just a few agenda items below, just to make way for that attorney to arrive this evening from a meeting that they are coming from. But hearing no further discussion and hearing no amendments on the agenda, roll call on approval of the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at the special presentation, a medical marijuana update. Presenters being Clerk Garland Doyle and Regulatory Analyst Jonathan Starks from the Clerk's Office. You have the floor, Clerk Doyle.
So as you alluded to last week during the discussion, that we will be giving a presentation to update the community on medical marijuana in Pontiac. So just to briefly go back over the types of license, medical marijuana licenses that are available in the city, there are grower, processor, and there are three classes of grower, processor, safety compliance, secure transporter, and provisioning centers. The application process, we accepted provisioning center applications based on ordinance 2357B for a one-time, 21-day application period that was back in January 6th through the 27th of 2020. We ended up receiving 103 provisioning center applications. And based on ordinance 2363, our zoning ordinance applications were accepted by district, and those are the number of applications we received per district. They were ranked against other applications in that district. So Caesar Chavez's applications were only ranked against Caesar Chavez's application. So it was only 17 applications. They were ranked 1 through 17, so forth for downtown, none overlay, and Walton. And then in addition to that, the ordinance allows a number, an unlimited number of growers, processors, safety compliance, and secure transporters. To date, we have received nine grower applications, three processors, one secure transporter. We haven't received any safety compliance applications. All the applications that we have received have been, in essence, reviewed. So we've reviewed 116 applications in total. So the first overlay district is the Caesar Chavez overlay district. And the, what's highlighted in green is the actual overlay district for Caesar Chavez. You will see, I believe, six dots on there, and that shows the top five ranked provisioning centers where they will be, in essence, located. And there is one grower application, PGSH Holdings, and where that grower will be located is a Class C grower, so they can grow up to 1,500 plants. And again, all rankings are final. We're through the entire appeals process, so these are the top five ranked provisioning centers for Caesar Chavez. So what we wanted to do actually is show like a profile on each applicant. State law does, uh, exempts medical marijuana applications from disclosure. So we asked each applicant if they were willing to disclose, in essence, information so where the public would be aware. Some of them were, some of them weren't. So you will see with some profiles what the applicant was willing to share and what the applicant was, in essence, if the applicant was not willing to share any information. And if we had a photo, a preliminary photo of what their location will look like, that's included in their profile as well, too. So this is just a summary of PGSH Holdings' profile. It talks about their community benefits, and it's just a summary. We will put on the City Clerk's page on the City of Pontiac's website the complete list of profiles for those applicants that signed the consent to release form, so where you can see their entire profile. This is just a summary as a part of the presentation. So for example, PGSH Holdings is pledging to donate $4,000 once a year to the Pontiac Community Foundation to benefit the Mattie McKinney Hatchet Park for acquisition and replacement of new playground equipment. As it relates to community outreach and education, they plan on appointing a community ombudsman to attend community meetings. And then this relates to job creation and opportunities. They'll be offering merit-based pay as well as some full-time employee benefits. Okay? So that was the grower profile for Caesar Chavez. I had alluded to Rise Cannabis is one of the top five ranked applicants. They did not sign the consent to release information form, so we were not able to do a profile, in essence, on them for the public. So that's why it shows their applicant did not sign consent to release information form. Again, that is allowable by state law. Westford Holdings, which will be operating under the Green Farms name, this is just a preliminary photo of their, in essence, location. They plan on making some donations to the Oakland Livingston Human Services organization as well as the Baldwin Center Soup Kitchen. And then, as well as their community outreach and education strategies, they'll be volunteering for Habitat for Humanity of Oakland County. And as it relates to job creation, they plan on offering 401K benefits. And again, these are just summaries. The full profile will be on the city's website. As you see here, it says partial profile. For a complete profile, see the Medical Marijuana Conditional Approved Applicant Profiles Report. Greenhouse Farms, which Sundays will be the name that they'll be operating, and this is a picture of their proposed site, which will be located at 985 Caesar Chavez. Again, this applicant did not sign the consent to release form, but that is a photo of what their, a preliminary photo of what their location will look like. Again, all of these applicants will now have to go through the site plan approval process through planning and so forth. So these are just, again, preliminary, preliminary photos.
Clerk Doyle, don't mean to interrupt you, but Pro Tem Carrington has a question that might help illuminate the presentation for everyone.
Yes, just a quick question concerning, you said, different groups based on state law, they don't have to release any information. But from the Clerk's Office perspective, in the city website, do the citizens have a right to understand those community benefit agreements that these companies have stated in their applications?
Those are contents of the application, so technically they are exempt from FOIA. We will be, the Clerk's Office will be monitoring them to make sure that they fulfill their community benefits, but they are exempt from having to disclose that information. Now, what some applicants have told us is the reason why they hadn't signed the consent to release forms was they wanted to wait until the whole appeals process was over. So we have sent out to all the applicants who did not sign the consent to release form, asking them again to sign the consent to release form. But again, they are not obligated to sign the consent to release form. But we feel it's important to share as much information as we can with, in essence, the public.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Okay, this is a Yellow Tail's adventure. They did sign, that's a preliminary photo of their location, which will be located at 1025 Caesar Chavez. And then this talks about some of the charities that they plan to give to as well as their community outreach and job creation. The Curate Leaf, they were one that did not sign the form. Okay? These are the top five ranked provisioning centers for downtown. And again, on the map.
If it's all right, Clerk Doyle, are there any questions from council in terms of the Caesar Chavez overlay district? All right, thank you.
That's the overlay district for downtown, and then the dots identify where the provisioning centers will locate. Common Citizen did not sign the consent form. Three Green LLC did. So this is the photo that they showed of their, with the existing building. So we highlighted the, their exact location at 81 North Saginaw, so that's why it's yellow highlighted. That will be the location. They plan on donating $25,000 annually to Life Beyond Reentry, and then they're also planning to make some pledges to Coleman Yocum's program as well, too. So keep going through because it's pretty extensive. Xenith Ventures is another top five ranked applicant, and they'll be locating at 22 North Saginaw. So again, highlighted in yellow is the proposed location. They plan to donate $25,000 annually to the Committee of 50 and Welcome Baptist Church, and then $60,000 towards improvements at the Hidden River Park or Public Space, I think that it was renamed. And again, all the ones that did sign the complete, you will be able to look extensively at all. These are just a summary of their community benefits, community outreach, or job creation, because a lot of them are much more detailed than this. That will be on the city's website. RTMC Enterprises, which will be, their location is 123 North Saginaw, and that's highlighted there, and they'll be making a donation to the Crystal Lake Fund. And again, this is another RTMC Enterprises applicant. 10 to 12 West Pike is the other proposed location. So those are the five for downtown.
Any questions about the downtown overlay district? Councilman Nicholson?
I've heard from a number of these applicants that once received their license, they planned to sell them rather than actually open their facility. What remains intact, if someone were to purchase that license or that business, what do they have to fulfill of the contract that's already in place?
So they would have to, and our ordinance allows for the transfer of license, but that has to be approved by the Clerk's, in essence, office. But we plan to make sure that they plan to fulfill all the agreements that were in the initial application, because that's how, in essence, these applicants were, in essence, scored.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the downtown overlay district? This doesn't preclude further questions afterward, but Clerk Doyle, please proceed.
Okay. Then this is the Walton Boulevard Overlay District, and it's highlighted in green. And then these are the locations of the provisioning centers. And then there's also been one grower that has been conditionally approved for Walton as well, Botanical Greens. And as it relates to Botanical Greens, they plan to make some donations to the Michigan Cannabis Coalition Association, and they'll be planning on attending neighborhood association meetings as well. And as it relates to the top five provisioning centers for Walton, Leaf Co. Ventures, this is their proposed location at 1461 Baldwin. And they plan on making some, I think it's 200 volunteer hours for Blessings of Hope at Hopewell Baptist Church, and towards the purchase of textbooks with the Pontiac School Oak Flynn LLC, which will probably be operating under the name of Bloomfields, this is their proposed location at 500 East Walton. They did not sign the consent to release form. Shine Cannabis, which will be locating at 41 East Walton, and then they'll be making various community benefit pledges as well. And 3967 Euclid, they plan to make donations to KFC Food Service, and also Higher Learning Institute, institutions. Will be forming some provisioning classes to teach people how to gain knowledge about the cannabis industry. So they'll be offering some scholarships for students to attend that school. 444 Commercial Consulting is the other location. They will be forming a community action board. They had listed in their application that Mr. Bass and Pastor Jones will be a part of that board, and that board will work on being like a liaison in the community, and they will be also making a $10,000 donation. This is the non-overlay, and identify where. So outside of those three overlay districts, we can license up to five provisioning centers, and these are the top five.
Any questions about the Walton Overlay District? For the few renderings that were shown, looked to be like there was some new construction mixed in there. Was that part of the determination in terms of what impact it would have on either bringing a building back to useful life or new construction?
It was a part of the scoring. Again, there was a 130-point scoring system. So under the planning section, that was a part of the planning section scoring.
Thank you. Any other questions about Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. I have one question. How was the groups that was, that you, they are pledging their time and their dollars and hours selected? How did they go about picking those, with that individually, or did you give them a list and they just said, I'll do this one, this one, and this one?
So it was important in the provisioning center scoring guide that all applicants received prior to submitting their applications as well as their application instructions. I thought it was important for them to go out and work with the community and decide what the needs of the community were in partnership. So you received points for showing that you had stakeholder involvement, that you had actually, so that you just didn't say, okay, I want to give to a Pontiac park, that you actually worked with the community, worked with community leaders, and determined with the community leaders what actually they would like to see in these particular areas. So you got points for community involvement, key stakeholder involvement, and things of that nature. So that's how that section was scored of the application. Does that answer your question?
No, it didn't. Because my question was how, how did they know the, the, the community, who to partner with? How did they know, like, who gave them a listing of who was all the LLCs to partner with? How did they find that out?
So it was, we didn't give any lists or anything like that because it was upon them to go out. If you, to me, if you were going to locate in a particular, like, for example, the Caesar Chavez or Walton Overlay districts, you needed to reach out to the various community associations and stuff in that area and work, in essence, with them. And you will notice throughout there, they did, in essence, do that. I think one of the applicants, if go back, I can't remember, it was something about working with the, the 4th District CDC. They will be forming a community action board. They had listed in their application that Mr. Bass and Pastor Jones will be a part of that board. And that board will work on being like a liaison in the community. And they will be also making a $10,000 donation. And this is the non-overlay and identify where. So outside of those three overlay districts, we can license up to five provisioning centers. And these are the top five.
Any questions about the Walton Overlay District? For the few renderings that were shown, looked to be like there was some new construction mixed in there. Was that part of the determination in terms of what impact it would have on either bringing a building back to useful life or new construction?
It was a part of the scoring. Again, there was a 130-point scoring system. So under the planning section, that was a part of the planning section scoring.
Thank you. Any other questions about Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. I have one question. How was the groups that was, that you, they are pledging their time and their dollars and hours selected? How did they go about picking those, with that individually? Or did you give them a list and they just said, I'll do this one, this one, and this one?
So it was important in the provisioning center scoring guide that all applicants received prior to submitting their applications, as well as their application instructions. I thought it was important for them to go out and work with the community and decide what the needs of the community were in partnership. So you received points for showing that you had stakeholder involvement, that you had actually, so that you just didn't say, okay, I want to give to a Pontiac Park. That you actually worked with the community, worked with community leaders, and determined with the community leaders what actually they would like to see in these particular areas. So you got points for community involvement, key stakeholder involvement, and things of that nature. So that's how that section was scored of the application. Does that answer your question?
No, it didn't. Because my question was, how did they know the community, who to partner with? How did they know, like, who gave them a listing of who was all the LLCs to partner with? How did they find that out?
So it was, we didn't give any lists or anything like that because it was upon them to go out. If you, to me, if you were going to locate in a particular, like, for example, the Caesar Chavez or Walton Overlay districts, you needed to reach out to the various community associations and stuff in that area and work, in essence, with them. And you will notice throughout there, they did, in essence, do that. I think one of the applicants, if we go back, I can't remember, it was something about working with the Fourth District CDC, oh, Shine Cannabis. So they did a lot of outreach. So they showed in their application, a number of these applicants have been attending community meetings prior to the start of the application process. So they detailed in their applications which meetings they had attended, who they, in essence, had talked to. They had to show letters of support. So there were a number of applicants that showed letters of support that they got from residents surrounding their proposed facilities. And those were all a part of the community development scoring portion of the application.
Thank you. Other questions on the Walton Overlay District? Please proceed.
So I think we were at the non-overlay, okay? So then this is Pleasantry's. They plan to donate 5% of their net profits to local organizations in alignment with their social equity plan. And they will be establishing a partnership with Carr Nav Group to provide pre-apprenticeships. And I believe that's Carlton Jones Group. And then here's a proposed picture of Pleasantry's, which will locate at 44821 Woodward. HKM Group at 50800 Woodward. They're pledging 1% towards local charities and as well as to volunteer 445 hours annually. Okay? This is Greenhouse Farms. They submitted an application in the non-overlay as well, but they did not sign the consent to release form. Attitude Wellness LLC, another applicant that did not sign the consent to release form. Nature's Remedy, they'll be doing a partnership with New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. Now, in addition, the city council has approved some conditional rezoning agreements. The first one was Rubicon Capital at the Old Glenwood Plaza site. So we have issued conditional approvals to Farmaco for grower and Family Roots for two grower applications at the Old Glenwood Plaza site. And they both, they'll be both doing grower and processor. So they can do build up to 100,000 square feet of grower processing space at the Old Glenwood Plaza site. These other conditional approval agreements that the city council has approved, including the one that you, this council just recently approved, NF Lawrence, none of, there has been no applicants at any of those other three sites that have submitted application as of today. The only site of a conditional rezoning agreement, as far as applicants, because the conditional rezoning agreements are separate from the application process. Only applications have been submitted to our office at the Rubicon Capital, the Old Glenwood Plaza site. But I felt it was necessary just to let the public know of the other conditional rezoning agreements.
Absolutely. Since that's the case, is it accurate to state that there are presently no grower or processor facilities that are currently operational in the city of Pontiac yet?
Right, we have not issued any permits yet to anybody. This is just conditional approval, which means they're through the application process, which shows later in the presentation, I'll advance it a little, to right here. So after we issue a conditional approval, then they still have to get their site plan approved by planning. They still have to get their building inspection. If they're building new, their permits, fire has to inspect. And then they also have to get a, provide proof of viability and casualty insurance from the, to the clerk's office as well. And then get their preapproval from the state as well.
Councilman Nicholson has a question?
To build off of the growers' facilities, I understand that we haven't gotten through the process with other growers, but I'm sure, I know, and I'm sure many people in this room know of places within the city marijuana is being grown currently. And as we all work with law enforcement and other entities to make sure that that happens in a legal way, has the clerk's office, I know you're already delved into recreational and looking at those ordinances at other cities, have, we started to look at caregiver ordinances to try to combat some of this illegal growing that's going on?
So I proposed, back under the previous council, that the city needed to adopt a caregiver ordinance. And I would reiterate that again to the, but the city attorney needs to prepare a caregiving ordinance for the city. Currently, the way caregiving is working in the city is, it's all being done by the planning division. And what we have identified is not a part of this presentation. Some people who were not successful with the application process in the clerk's office has applied to be caregivers at sites that they had submitted a provisioning center application. So to me, that's a problem. So we definitely need a caregiver ordinance.
For the public's benefit, can you give just a quick synopsis of the difference between maybe like the Level C to a caregiver?
So caregiver, you can grow, you can serve up to six patients. What I'm hearing is that there is some movement within the state law to change that to just one patient. But currently, it's six patients up to 72 plants. Whereas the, to get a license in the city, we have three classes of growers, up to 500 plants, I think that's Class A, Class B is up to 1,000, and C is up to 1,500.
Thank you.
Other questions? And bearing in mind that the clerk has more slides and information for us, I do want to point out for the non-overlay district, the HKM Group LLC, 50800 Woodward Avenue, on the map, it shows that it's between Pike and Huron on northbound Woodward. And that was interesting to me, since that would kind of be across a parking lot from my house. So I didn't think there would be an applicable property there. So I looked up the address, looks like it's on the other, it's on the southbound Woodward Loop. Where the former Maza Auto Parts is, the orange and black building where Pike Street and southbound Woodward Loop. Just, that's my, you know, back of the napkin.
Okay.
Google sleuthing.
All right, we'll make sure we edit that.
Other questions on non-overlay district? Hearing none, please proceed.
Okay, so we'll go back. Okay, so we were talking about that. So then this just talks about the community benefits as it relates, because growers and processors still had to play, as a part of the application process, had to pledge, in essence, community benefits. So if you will remember, with the Rubicon Capital conditional rezoning agreement, as a part of their conditional rezoning, they pledged to build a grocery store at the site. But they can do growing and processing up to a certain level before they actually have to build the grocery store. But we did want to alert the community that as a part of that conditional rezoning, they are supposed to build a grocery store. And then Farmaco, who's one of their tenants for grower and processor, they did not sign the consent to release, but Family Roots did. And they plan to donate 1% of their sales annually to the Lighthouse of Oakland County. Lucy Detroit is another proposed grower at that site, the Old Glenwood Plaza site. And they plan to make a donation to Carlton Jones Group and as well as to the Community Bible Baptist Church.
Questions on the non-overlay grower and processor? Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. My question was in regards to the Rubicon projects in Glenwood Plaza. And you mentioned the grocery store. Is there a time limit that they have to get the grocery store built?
I have to review the conditional rezoning agreement yet, but I do know that they first are permitted to get growing and processing up and running. From my understanding, there's nothing happening at that site right now. So we do need to reach back out to them to find out what the overall status is. Because there has not been any particular building at the site yet.
I know I've seen some piles of dirt occasionally out there, but I don't know if they're doing anything. I'm certain what would be interested is if there is something connected to the zoning that would say that the grocery store has to be built, since it was rezoned for that purpose. So that they can get that with the condition of the grocery store, that we find out what is the time limit on having a grocery store built.
All the conditional rezonings, and probably is a better question for Vern, the planning manager, have a-
The clerk has the floor.
Have a time limit on them?
Right.
That if they haven't, you know, did what they were supposed to do, the conditional rezoning will, in essence, go away. I can bring that information back to you. And I just wanted to, sorry.
No, you're okay. Any other questions? Please proceed.
I'll talk about the appeal process. And the people who appealed were provisioning center applicants that did not rank in the top five. No grower or processor has appealed. We have denied some grower and processor applications. And only because with grower and processor applications, unlike provisioning centers, if they, applications were deficient, we allow them to cure their deficiencies. But some applicants just simply did not cure their deficiencies. So we issued them a denial letter to close out their application, but they did not appeal because any applicant has the right to appeal. So it was a two-step appeal process. Once you received your notification from the clerk, you have 14 days to appeal, which was to the hearing officer. Greewall Law served as our hearing officer. And we went through all the appeals for Caesar Chavez downtown, non-overlay, and Walton. And then you could further appeal to the Medical Marijuana Commission. And we just wrapped up that process. And the Medical Marijuana Commission was a four-member, in essence, commission. And I do want to thank the four commissioners, Robert Ford Jr., Paul Wilson, David Parath, and Myron Maylie. They put these four individuals, put in an extensive amount of time reviewing all of these, in essence, applications to make sure that the hearing officer did not, in essence, make any errors. Because the hearing officer did make some recommendations to the clerk, I accepted all the hearing officer's recommendation. But then you could further appeal to the commission. And so the commission reviewed the entire applications. And again, those were all citizens. So there was citizen involvement in the process. So this just gives an update on what happened with all the appeals to, in essence, the commission. So all the appeals to the commission were denied. Several applicants withdrew their appeal. In one case with the Baldwin Investment Group, their appeal was denied in part. And then the clerk's decision was overturned. In one case where we saw the hearing officer gave a point as related to insurance to this particular applicant, and it was inconsistent with what had happened with some other applications. So the commission did rule that that was arbitrary and that the point should be taken away from Baldwin, so where it could be consistent with the other applications.
But that didn't materially change the ranking, correct? I didn't see-
No, no, no. There were no changing to the rankings as related to the commission. And as I had already talked about, the pre-permit process, so now that we've issued conditional approvals, applicants are now in the pre-permit process. So we plan to work with the administration to move these projects forward so where we can actually issue permits and facilities can begin to open up. So what we will be doing, we'll be tracking the conditional approvals, as you see here, the applicant's name, their proposed location, and where they are in the process. Have they gotten their site plan approved? Have they gotten permits from the building department? So you see, like, Botanical Greens, as it relates to building, it's currently, in essence, under review, whether they've gotten their state preapproval. So no applicant has completed this whole process. That's why we have not issued any permits. And then this is related to provisioning centers who just received their conditional approvals at the end of last month. And then again, I established a citizen monitoring task force, because I really think it's important, these are new businesses that will be coming to our community, that they work with. In essence, the community, we plan to track them, to track their community benefits. Been in municipal government a long time in a number of businesses, has been alluded to at the council. They make a lot of commitments and they don't fulfill them. So we really want to make sure that what they said in their applications, they're actually going to fulfill those. The application process is renewable every year. So we will, every year, you have to submit an entire application. So we will be tracking to make sure that they did what they said they would do. Oh, and then the last slide, I just wanted to be totally transparent with the public and to show how much revenue we received, and that was just the application fees. We received a total of $580,000 in application fees. To date, $443,773.63 have been spent. There's still $136,000 that has not been spent. And then just to show you how those fees, in essence, have been spent, and that's what the pie chart identifies. And then this presentation is a part of the agenda packet, and it is on the city's website for the public to see.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. First, I want to say, brother Garland, thank you for coming back and doing this. I know that you're in the midst of taking care of your father, so we certainly appreciate that you came back and did this. So it is really an excellent presentation that you did today for that. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
We appreciate your effort of coming out, dealing with your grief and sorrow that you came out to present with us today. So thank you.
Councilman Nicholson and then Pro Tem Carrington?
Thank you. This is very informative. I'm glad to see this is moving. Glad to see the onus is now on the applicant's side to finish the process. What I would love to see in any project that contains community benefits in the future is maybe a public, more of a public announcement about the opportunity. It's not to say that these organizations don't do good work. I'm not a part of any of these organizations' work, so I'm not completely familiar, I can't speak to that. But I'm sad to see fewer 501(c)(3)'s rather than churches listed. And a lot of names that we've heard over and over and over again, not that they're bad, it's just to see that they're very consistent. So I, you know, I would love to see some of the shelter programs involved. You know, it's, what it does is it creates eyes to, for people to believe that there is steering that's going on, especially when we see some of these names, the same names. Yeah, so I think maybe if we made more of an effort to say, there's going to be this opportunity, nonprofits of Pontiac, especially youth-oriented organizations, you know, there's going to be this pot of money that's up for grabs. It seems like there were more people who, when people come to our city, they just assume these are the people who they should go to, because maybe they're more out in front and on TV or here or there. But I would like to see us make an effort, all of us make an effort to really get those people that we work with, you know, and say, hey, there's going to be an opportunity, why don't we see if we can take advantage of this for some of those smaller groups that do really good one-on-one work? And I think really the youth would, especially from a recreational perspective, be able to take advantage of things like this in a way that's a little more inclusive.
Just on that point, Mr. President, like I said, these were just summaries. So there are a number of nonprofits that are listed on the full profiles. So the full profile sheet, which should be on the city's website, we've given the information to Mr. Martin, will show all of the organizations. So we couldn't put them all on like one slide. So there are a number, like, one organization may have pledged to like 10 different.
Sure.
And so a number of nonprofits are listed there. It also shows the duration and the description of the project. So it's a lot more detail than what was in this presentation.
I assume then the monitoring task force will be involved in reporting and talking more about those community benefits and how those are being received.
They're just to help, like, come up with, in essence, a plan with the city to help us come up with a tracking system. But like I said, in that report, all of the detailed information- But like I say, in that report, all of the detailed information is in essence there for the applicants that signed the consent to release form. And again, a number of applicants did make pledges, but they just did not sign the consent to release form. So we were unable to give that, share that information with the public. But they still will be monitored, just like the people who shared their information.
Your office does a fantastic job of sharing that information, so I'll, I'll keep looking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pro Tem Carrington and then Councilman Goodman.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. First, sir, I'd like to also offer my condolences.
Thank you.
For the loss of your father. And I definitely appreciate the presentation as well. It looks like you went to great lengths to make sure that you created a monitor system to make sure you track a lot of these community benefit agreements. So I definitely like that aspect of, of what you're doing. Also concerning for the community, as you notice, he talked about state law. So state law is really not in the council's purview. So if many of you are upset concerning disclosure as much as I am, then that means you have to write your state rep and your state senator to, to let them know that it's definitely unfair. It's kind of kudos to those organizations that actually disclose, and I respect that. But those that didn't, it's kind of hard to understand what you actually are doing in this community. And I'm assuming that these applications were chosen based on a lot of the community, community benefit agreements that these organizations decided to, to work in within our community. So again, as far as a community standpoint, you really have to contact your state rep and state senator concerning some of the state laws around medical marijuana. Thank you.
And, and just on that point, if like the, the law has changed where like applicants could disclose, that the community benefits portions of the application were subject to FOIA. I do understand why, from the standpoint, if I was a business owner, I don't want my financials to be disclosed, you know, to my potential competitors. So I understand why there is not subject to FOIA, but some aspects of the application should be like the community benefits portion.
Councilman Goodman.
I think, because first of all, Clerk Doyle, you did an amazing job explaining this as per usual, so I really appreciate that. And the way that you've explained a couple of things has kind of shortened this response, but I do just want to make the point of this is again why people need to be involved because when people aren't, transparency begins to fall away in the process. And then we run into situations like this where, again, nothing that's happening is illegal, but the things that are happening are less than ideal for many of us. We're coming into a situation not exactly feeling the most confident and sure about these situations. So we have to make sure that going ahead, these processes are set up beforehand in a much better way to protect us from these situations. Because to my colleague's point, I don't like sitting up here and looking at things and having to go off of blind faith that someone's going to follow through with something. And not only that, to Councilman Nicholson's point, the transparency and just better general outreach to the community. Again, I know this is not the entirety of the people and the nonprofits that are involved, but even I can say from the years since this passed to now, it doesn't feel that many, like much of the community was outreach to, opposed to the same usual suspects. Not, again, not to say that they don't do good work, but the, the usual people and then by, by chance, the people who may have heard about it and got a chance to get involved. And when better outreach to people, we, the same applicants may still float to the top when it comes to being recipients of these community benefits agreements. These people who apply for it from the organization can still maybe rise to the top and still be the ones that get chosen. But better making that process more clear and transparent makes it better and easier for everyone all across the board.
Others that wish to have the floor? Any final thoughts, Clerk Doyle? You want to give a shout out to your team?
Oh, so Mr. Starks, who serves as the regulatory analyst in my office, has been very instrumental in this process and has put in a lot of extra hours, in particular as it relates to the commission, because a number of the commissioners worked. So we had to stay late, 10, 11 o'clock at night over the last several weeks so where they could get through reviewing the applications. But I would like to mention to the council, we are starting to receive phone calls as it relates to recreational marijuana and about the potential of it being a ballot initiative. There has been some conversation about that. It's clearly, the deadline has passed for the August ballot, to be a ballot initiative for August, but it has not passed for November. So whatever the council would like to see, probably in essence should move forward so we're not faced with another ballot in essence initiative. The clerk's office had to adhere to ordinance 2357B because that's what was approved by the voters. So we could not, if we wanted to do more, we couldn't do more. Because that's the way in essence the ordinance was written. So if this council and the mayor, you know, would like to see, I know there's been social equity mentioned, we're in the process of looking at other ordinances, that's what I have Mr. Starks now working on, researching other ordinances throughout the state, what are they doing as it relates to social equity? And we'll be putting together a report for the council as you look to possibly put together a recreational ordinance. But I do want to alert you that we are getting calls about recreation and the possibility that there may be a ballot initiative.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson.
Yeah, I want to, you know, say to my colleagues, I, I think this is something we have to prioritize. We certainly don't want to end up in the same position where it's done for us and we're not happy with the results. I think we have to put some, some time in related to caregiver and also recreational. I think it'll help solidify this process and just keep it as, as Pontiac as it needs to be.
Councilman Goodman.
I would just like to also stress that urge. To put in the most simplest of terms, we would be idiotic to not get ahead of this. We would be setting ourselves up back in the same position that we're currently in, that we're currently complaining about. And to do nothing and then, of course, then blame the situation again would not be good governance. So I, I think, again, it should be one of the priorities to work on this, and that's also me speaking for myself as well.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Well, it's, it's definitely some tough decisions that the council got to make as we move forward. I think it is, Elkin, my colleagues, that we do have to get in front of this. I think last time around, we saw definitely confusion with too many proposals on the ballot that really started a lot of confusion within this community. So definitely we need to sit down, put our minds together and do what's best for the community. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? All right. With that, Clerk Doyle, Regulatory Analyst Stark, thank you very much for the mature that you prepared. And my final comment would be, thank you for helping, once the, the barriers and obstacles were cleared away, moving very expeditiously. A very sobering milestone is that we are a few weeks away from four years, four years ago, the voters adopted that ordinance. Is that right?
That is correct. But, but I would say is, is that because I was under the mindset that I'm going in essence adhere to the ordinance. And I guess I need to give a shout out to the, the mayor. With his support, we were able to wrap this process up in less than six months that had taken years to get to this point.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Was that a hand legislative counsel sharp?
Yeah.
All right, very good. With that, special presentation concluded. We're now at discussion item, city retirees pensions, possible permanent increases and asset transfer status developments. Since our last regular city council meeting, we received multiple communications from different entities pertaining to retirees of the city of Pontiac. I know I speak for myself, and I think the whole council, that we want to see the permanent increase for retirees for all systems, not just for those, AKA hospitals too, the hospital retirees as well. We know that there are many elements that aren't directly in our domain that we get to directly make decisions on. And so I want to give the floor to the mayor to bring us up to speed with the multiple developments that have at least been conveyed to us. And we have legal counsel here as well to help us understand where we are, what's, what's just happened, what, what might soon happen, and then what action and when might council be able to take to facilitate progress for our retirees and a stable outlook.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And let me begin by saying that we're very fortunate here in the city of Pontiac to now be in a position where we have retiree healthcare fully funded and we have a pension system that's fully funded. And that is very, very unusual in not just the state of Michigan, but really anywhere in the country to have that dynamic. And it wasn't that long ago that the city of Detroit declared bankruptcy for a variety of reasons, but one of the reasons was that they were really struggling to fund retiree healthcare and their pensions. And of course, as a result of the underfunding of their pension system and retiree healthcare among other financial distress, retirees and their pension system ended up taking quite a hit in terms of their pension benefits and, and I believe as well their retiree healthcare benefits. So we're very fortunate that we have now two systems that are actually overfunded. And the pension system was until recently funded at 130%. If you're wondering why 130%, it's because there are fluctuations in the market, and we want to make sure that we're cushioning against those downturns in the stock market. In fact, although it was until recently 130% funded, it's now down around 122% funded as of a couple of weeks ago. And that drastic decline of 8% in terms of the funding level of funds versus liabilities is because of the stock market falling so much in just the past few months. So having that buffer above 100% funding is very important to make sure that we're protecting our city's retirees so that as there are market fluctuations, they can be sure that they get their pension benefits. As I think many of you know, we have been saying for some time that if we want the monthly pension, the, the monthly bonus payment, if you will, of some amount to continue, including up to the $400 amount, it's really important that the additional funds that were in the old GERS be transferred to the new GERS to provide enough funds to provide for that monthly payment rather than transferring those remaining assets in the old pension fund to the retiree healthcare account, the VIBA. And just last week, on Thursday, we got really positive news that the members of CIPRIA, the City of Pontiac Retired Employee Association, voted to support the transferring of the remaining funds from the old pension account, the old GERS, to the newly established pension fund and that they supported continuing payment of a monthly additional benefit in addition to the basic pension benefits. So that's really, really positive news. It's positive news, although transferring those funds from the old GERS to the new GERS and establishing a monthly benefit still requires a couple of steps. First of all, it requires city council to amend the existing ordinance on this topic. But it's also the view of the city's retiree benefit specialist, Sam Kopas, who's here this evening and can share her thoughts on this. It's also the view of the city's attorney that it requires an amendment of the settlement agreement between the city and CIPRIA. And we're aware that CIPRIA, although they've signed off on it, in principle, they do feel strongly that they want to amend that settlement agreement. The other thing that I would note is that because of the decline in the stock market, the current funding in the new GERS, as I said, has dipped from 130% funding to around 122% funding. But the amount of assets in the old GERS have also dipped so that if the existing assets were transferred and the full 400 monthly benefit were paid, the system would be at about 119% funded. So as I said earlier, it's very important that we have an adequate cushion, an adequate safeguard, because the last thing we want to do is provide the $400 monthly benefit only to jeopardize that basic pension. So as we look at moving forward and providing a monthly benefit, it is my view and my recommendation that we provide the $400 monthly benefit or as much of that monthly benefit as possible so long as we don't go below that 130% funding threshold. And that's something that I'll be recommending be included in any amended ordinance that the city council approve, as well as, as we seek to amend the settlement agreement with CIPRIA, something that I believe we should include in the provisions of that amendment to the settlement agreement. And without further ado, Mr. President, I'd like to invite Ms. Kopas to the podium to speak to her perspective that the settlement agreement should be amended before city council amends the ordinance that's on this topic. Ms. Kopas?
Thank you for having me this evening. I'll just be real brief. The settlement agreement by its terms requires 130% of the liabilities to go to the new GERS and anything in excess go to the VIBA. Obviously, it's our understanding that CIPRIA has agreed that the assets that are still sitting in the old GERS should be transferred to the new GERS, which I think is consistent with everybody's desire here. But there is a process that must be followed. The settlement agreement does need to be amended and it needs to go through the court approval process. And so I think to move forward with transferring assets before that process has been completed is imprudent. My concern being that if there is for some reason some unforeseen hiccup, CIPRIA changes its mind without, you know, having stuff in writing, whatever that may be, I would hate for somebody to coming back to the city claiming a violation of the settlement agreement and the city subjecting itself to, to liability for, for that violation.
I, an immediate question is, is there an anticipated timeframe for what that would entail?
So based on my litigation partners who had handled the, the litigation aspect of it, I did speak with them about that. And the thought process was that we would get a meeting in front of the judge jointly with CIPRIA to tell them what we're looking to do, which would take a few weeks. And the thought is that the process would probably take about 90 days, based on our current information.
Other discussion?
Yes, just a quick question.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. So this is, this is interesting. And I, I guess my, my concern is, is that it's been going on for how long now? Maybe close to 10 years if I'm not mistaken. And I'm, I'm, you know, and people are actually at this time, that $400 has been, is, they're missing this $400, which is critical to their own health and safety within their own families. So, so I'm hoping that the city can definitely, you guys can move this forward as fast as you can. And I, and President McGinnis, also, I want to, if possible, I'd like this council to hear from the GERS representative as, as well.
Sure, yeah, we can have the leadership of GERS and, and CIPRIA if they are in the room as well, give them the floor. But just want to give council opportunity for first round of questions or comments. Councilman Parker?
Well, I'll defer until we hear from the, the GERS people because when I heard this, when we were meeting last Friday, it had a different spin on it. So now I'm somewhat confused. So Cynthia, would you mind?
Yes.
Would you please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Billingsdon, and I'm legal counsel for the General Employees Retirement System. So the GERS board did meet last Friday after the CIPRIA meeting to talk about the transfer of assets. And, and the one thing I want to say, and I, I hope everyone here understands this, but time is of the essence because the IRS approved this termination effective March 31st, 2021. And under IRS rules, we have to transfer those assets out of the system as soon as administratively feasible. One year is deemed to be. One year is deemed to be that relevant time period. We passed that by a couple of months. So there is concern, the longer this drags out with the money still being in the old GERS, that we could be running afoul of the IRS rules. So another 90 days, that is a little stressful, to say the least. From the GERS standpoint, and I understand what Sam is saying, because her job is to protect the city, from the GERS standpoint, what I reported to my board was that if, you know, we've got CIPRIA indicating, one party to the settlement agreement, indicating that they are amenable to transferring the assets to the new GERS, if we were to get similar assurances from the city, that we could go ahead and move those assets. That's from the GERS perspective. Again, I understand what Sam is saying and the concern over not amending or having the settlement agreement amended prior to the transfer of assets, but on the other hand, we really need to get those assets out of the old GERS as soon as possible.
So my question, which was my question Friday, is there a way to do this certainly without extending the process to give the employees what they want and shorten the timeframe up without putting the city in legal jeopardy?
So that's a great question. Unfortunately, you know, we tried to go the route of an escrow agreement, to get the money out, and we can't get the parties to agree on the terms of the escrow agreement. I'm not sure what we can do at this point to protect the city and all of the parties other than, you know, I mean, that's a conservative approach, but if I was in her shoes, I probably would say the same thing. As a GERS attorney, you know, the assets, we need to get those out of the system. And I say that as a GERS attorney, that's also protection for the city, because it's going to be the city that's going to be penalized by the IRS, you know, if they take issue with the amount of time that it's taken to get the assets out of that old plan.
So...
I don't, I wish I had a magic...
Is there a middle space that can be?
Can you offer?
Because again, understanding the volatility of the stock market, which is somewhat affecting even this decision now, how do we move forward, again, without first putting the city in jeopardy, but give the employees who've been waiting for years and years that which are much needed, because we've cut some money from some people that desperately need it?
Well...
And I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, and I share, of course, Pastor Councilman Parker's concerns about it, but Ms. Kopas, I know that it could take up to 90 days if the judge requires notice to the class members, but absent that, and there's at least a good argument that that notice isn't required under the terms of the settlement agreement, I was under the understanding you thought it could be done within three to four weeks.
So now, I'm not a litigation attorney, so, you know, my understanding of the court process is not that of my partners, but my understanding is that class notice is required anytime that there's a substantive change to the settlement agreement unless it is determined that the changes are benefiting every single class member. And the argument is that this is in fact benefiting the class members, but what the fear is, is that maybe some class member will come forward and say, hey, no, this really isn't helping me. And so the thought was to have the court issue an opinion that notice was not going to be required because the court determined that this was in the best interest of the class members.
I agree with everything you just said, but if the court were to issue such an opinion, what would the timeframe be?
That's the 90-day, what we're anticipating to be the 90-day time period between the time of when we contact the court and when a final determination is made. And again, that just depends on how quickly we can get in front of the court, to the court of the judge, what the judge ends up requiring, if he's going to require a hearing and briefing, which we're anticipating that he would, but we obviously don't have a crystal ball. And also, the more that the city and CIPRIA are on point with each other and, you know, in agreement and sending out mutual briefs and stuff like that to the judge, I think the faster that process would go.
So do you recommend we still try to do an escrow agreement to address Ms. Billings' concern?
My recommendation would be to still attempt to do the escrow agreement because of the necessity of getting the money out of the old GERS. I agree with everything that Cynthia said, that we are on borrowed time with the IRS and that the money needs to get out of there. I'm not sure exactly what the hiccups, I'm not involved with negotiating the escrow agreement, but that would still be my recommendation to get, if we could get the money out of the old GERS as soon as possible.
Sam, could I ask a question? We talked briefly about this yesterday, Samantha and I did, and that is, is there a way that we can provide this benefit without having to amend the settlement agreement to avoid the whole court process? And that would be if there was a way that we could add the liabilities to the old GERS. So remember going back to the settlement agreement, the settlement agreement requires that 130% of the pension liabilities, assets to cover that, get transferred to the new GERS. If we could add the liability for this extra, for this $400 benefit to make it permanent to the old, to the liability under the old GERS, are we really amending or do we really need to amend the settlement agreement?
So, and I think that that's something that could be considered, but I think that it's also something that's an end around to the amendment of the settlement agreement. And if we were to go that route, I think that the city would have to get comfortable that this is not an amendment to the settlement agreement or, you know, violating the settlement agreement, as would CIPRIA. And so the only way I would want to move forward with that approach is if both city council and CIPRIA council agree in writing that this isn't changing the terms of the settlement agreement.
And I would agree with that, because it's your agreement, it's your agreement and it's CIPRIA's agreement, but I don't know that CIPRIA is aware that we could possibly add the, if the membership wants to transfer the assets to the new GERS, they may not be aware that we could do it by simply adding the liabilities to the old GERS. If they knew that, they might be amenable to it as opposed to going through the process of having to amend the settlement agreement. Would you not agree?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that everybody would just need to look at, and I cannot predict what CIPRIA's council is or is not going to do and how quickly they will move.
Well, are you comfortable with that as the legal counsel for the city?
Not without reviewing it in more detail against the settlement agreement and having the attorneys that actually drafted the settlement agreement from the city's perspective look at it as well.
Is there leadership from CIPRIA that wishes to be a part of this discussion? Don't want to foreclose that opportunity. Other council members in this act of discussion, Councilman Nicholson?
Ms. Kopas brought up the point of wanting to make sure that the groups were as cohesive as possible. Something that stuck out to me, Mayor, and maybe you can help me wrap my arms around, if the assets are transferred and you stated that it would then reduce based on the amount of assets in the account because of the stock market, would be down to 119%, yet you recommended our resolution, fund a permanent increase to not reduce the account, the account's already reduced to 119. Has there been an actuarial study of what that would, what that new payment would be? What I would hate is that there's a number that's on the table of 400, and if we're at 119 and we can't take it below 130...
Right. So it's, obviously, it's hard to predict, impossible to predict for sure what the stock market will do in the near term, because, you know, if we had that crystal ball, we'd all be billionaires. But the short answer is that if we were to say we will provide a monthly benefit up to $400, but the specific amount would depend on whatever we can afford to do without drawing down the funded level below 130%, what our estimate is, and this is a preliminary estimate, is that it would immediately allow for a monthly benefit somewhere between $150 and $200. And that would allow us to maintain that 130% funded.
So my question then to the individuals that are negotiating this?
Just as a caveat to that, obviously, as the stock market goes up, if it goes up, it would allow that...
Order, order in the chamber, the mayor has the floor.
It would allow that monthly benefit to increase if the stock market increased.
But not more than 400, which what seems the parties' interest is. Do you think that if the amount went down from what everyone's been talking about of $400, and the council approves something that says, okay, it's probably not going to be 400, it's going to be more like $150 to $200, sounds to me like the parties no longer agree.
I can't speak for CIPRIA on that point. I do know that various renditions of the $400 permanent increase have had caps based on either funding of the plan or earnings and interest rate assumptions. So I know that that has been out there before, but as to whether or not there's a meeting of the minds right now on this issue, I don't know what CIPRIA is thinking.
Legislative Council, Shar?
I guess that's my question, are you both in agreement on all essential terms?
I don't think, I don't think we necessarily are. I mean, I think it's hard to know, because we don't have CIPRIA here, and Ms. Kopas hasn't sat down with CIPRIA yet. But, you know, the notion was always ensuring at least 130% funding in GERS. And that was always, that was the basis of the settlement agreement, which did not provide for a $400 monthly benefit. It was the basis of the amount of funding held back in the old GERS, is that that amount of funding was enough to pay the $400 monthly benefit and maintain the 130% funding. So the goal was always to, and the assumption, the operating assumption, was always to maintain at least 130% funding with or without the $400 monthly benefit. And that's why I'm referring to that 130%. And that is ultimately to protect the retirees, because the last thing I think anybody in this room wants is to pay some additional monthly benefit beyond the basic pension and thereby jeopardize the basic pension by having the city of Pontiac end up in a underfunded pension system or a bankruptcy situation like the city of Detroit.
But I guess then my question is, in order for you to even consider presenting something in front of a judge, you got to know whether or not you guys are on the same page with the terms, right?
That's right, and that's why we've asked Ms. Kopas to reach out to counsel for CIPRIA and have that conversation. All of this just happened very late last week, and it's now Tuesday. So, you know, again, we agree, obviously.
Councilman Nicholson?
So I think my concern is if we didn't amend the global settlement agreement and we ended in a place where the council has to approve something that, of course, caps, which the original intent of the global settlement agreement did with 130% funding. If we don't do that, and then members end up with a $100, $150 payment, that would only encourage a member to come to the court to say, this did change the global settlement agreement. So to me, I don't see how, if that, if both of those trains leave the station, we couldn't not amend the global settlement agreement. It seems to me that that might be the only direction to go in, because it would only encourage a member to be upset, especially a member that maybe didn't quite understand that the $400 number was aspirational.
Others that wish to have the floor, Councilman Parker?
And certainly, I'm not an actuary, so...
None of us are.
And so, as we talk about money, and then part of it is certainly tied to the stock market and what the volatility of the stock market itself, and we all sort of understand that. And where we're trying to get to is certainly the $400, that's dependent on monies being available to give the $400. And if I'm not mistaken, there was also an agreement, I thought, in principle at least, that may have even been reached with the previous council as to how they would move forward with this issue, that I'm not even sure if that's still viable or not, because I think as we're talking of it right now, listening to all the volatility of the stock market and what money is right now, is probably a moot point. Is that about right?
I'm not sure which previous agreement you're talking about.
Are you referring to the proposed amendment that depended upon the funding level of the system and that benefit being paid? And I think there was also talk, I think the prior mayor had some proposal where, you know, if the system earns 6% or, you know, something like that, this amount would be paid and whatever. I'm not completely familiar with what her proposal was, but that, I think, would be very difficult to administer, but I would leave that to the actuary and the executive director to answer that question.
I just want to make sure that, I think all of us have the desire to do what's best for the employees, without placing other employees at jeopardy and certainly without placing the city in bankruptcy. So how we do that and move forward is going to be very significant, and hopefully we can get everybody on the same page at the same time, but money sometimes affects people differently. And so I think we're all saying the same thing, it's just how do we get there?
Right.
With the settlement being the foundation of it, how do you get there without the night and day change to the settlement agreement? How do you get there and give people who've been waiting now for better part of years the funding that they've been asking for, understanding that, at least back in February, those who were getting $400 at this point ain't getting $400, correct?
And I believe that was really the catalyst for the idea of the escrow agreement, so that the money could be out of the old GERS, we didn't have to worry about the IRS looming, you know, deadline to complete the termination, and the parties could really work together to craft what's the proper inform resolution.
So just to recap in my head, everything else that has happened prior to this council taking seat is probably off the table.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't know if there's been further consideration among the city, the GERS board, and CIPRIA regarding exactly how the continued $400 would work, but I know that the ideas that were presented last year were never signed off by all the parties.
Okay. Final question, then I'm done. So then, if I understand, and again, my brain don't work like some folks do, it certainly don't work like it used to, when we talk, as we're talking about this monies, it really is about what's best for the employees. And the real issue is what CIPRIA will agree to that keeps the city harmless, correct? Does I understand it? So if they agree to something, then, and it doesn't place the city in jeopardy, then we can move forward, correct?
Yes, but you also have to keep in mind the fact that CIPRIA represents a class, and again, if we're amending the settlement agreement, we have to be looking out for the best interests of every class member.
I'm gonna leave it alone. I'm gonna leave it alone.
Mayor Grimal?
Ms. Kopas made the observation I wanted to make, which is that there were a couple of things being floated last year, one, I think, by the previous mayor, one by the previous council, but there was never anything that was agreed to by all parties. I don't think there was ever anything even agreed to between the previous mayor and the previous council, much less CIPRIA and other folks.
Other discussion? Thank you to Attorney Kopas and Attorney Billings-Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I got it right. We do have the executive director of the GERS with us, who has signed up for Agenda Address, which is coming up momentarily. Hearing no further discussion on this item, which we will actively seek further guidance and ideally progress, we now are moving at recognition of elected officials. Are there any elected officials requesting recognition? With that, we are at Agenda Address. President Pro Tem Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. Ms. Deborah Munson?
You have the floor for Agenda Address.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to address just a couple of things and maybe add some color to some information that was put out there for you. The first thing I'd like to say is that this is a pension, it's a perpetual entity, right? Theoretically, this thing's going to last for the next 100 years until that last beneficiary gets their last payment, right? So our liabilities are measured over many, many years. Our assets are smoothed over five years. I want to explain that, because we throw out this funded level... are smoothed over five years. I want to explain that, because we throw out this funded level. Our funded level is measured once per year. We get a valuation report, the actuary measures how much have you promised in benefits to everyone that you owe, and what are the assets as of a particular date. So that's how your funded status is determined. So when I hear the numbers like 119% or 130% or whatever it is, you're looking at a point in time. If you look at the assets which were transferred into the new GERS, plus the assets which remain in the old GERS, combined, that's about 130% of the liabilities as they were measured as of last March 31. The liabilities don't change much from year to year, because we're pretty much a closed plan, right? So the retirees, we know how much we've promised them, and, and that liability doesn't increase, it actually decreased every time we give them a check. Active employees, we're still earning a benefit, and that's where your liability goes up a little bit. But again, we only have 26 active employees, right? So when you start talking about the funded status, that is a measurement at a point in time. And our assets have gone down this year. But our, when you look at the valuation report, our assets, we don't say, this year we're at 500 million, this year we're at 400 million, you know, we don't do this and this and this with our asset value. We take, we're supposed to earn a 6% rate of return each year. So each year, whether we have a positive or negative return, we take our assets and we apply a 6% rate of return. If we had extra earnings, they go into a bucket. And over the next five years, those extra earnings get smoothed in to our asset value. So when they talk about the, the decrease in the assets this year, yeah, they've gone down, but the way we measure our assets for evaluation purposes, the volatility in the market is not as critical, because we do have those prior years where we did earn more than we needed to earn. So we kind of have this bucket of reserve earnings. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. The, one other thing, I really guess I would like to ask the council, perhaps the mayor, obviously, I don't know if you all are aware, but on our board, we have two members of the Cypria board, Billy Swazer and Jim Mariani, both sit on the Cypria board. So we get information very often through them. I don't know if you all are aware, but the membership actually had to override the decision of that Cypria board. That Cypria board, the majority, excuse me, six members of that nine-member board didn't want to pre-fund this benefit. So the membership had to get together and literally override the board itself. So when you say, well, we need to talk to the Cypria attorney, he's going to do what those six members who opposed the pre-funding wants them to do, not what the membership finally, after four months, was able to do, which is override that, that board's decision to not pre-fund it. So now, that's my question. Who are you dealing with when you said, we have to go through the Cypria attorney? You're, he's working for the six members, not the membership. So that's my question, I guess that's a question. It was very difficult for the membership. They had multiple meetings where they tried to override, according to their bylaws, you know, the vote of the board. And, and they finally did it last Thursday. So now to go back and, and to say, well, we're still going to deal with the people who didn't want to pre-fund it in the first place, I'm just curious how that works when it was the membership who finally, you know, came to that point where they could override that decision. I, I guess, my time's up, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I do want you to understand, when, when it comes to that permanent increase, the ordinance that we sent to you said, we would grant, the city council would grant the permanent increase, but in any year where the funded level fell below 113%, you would get zero. It was either 400 or zero. And that 130% was put, was a number provided by our actuary. And the previous council had actually requested, hey, we want to protect the city, you know, we can't just grant this permanent benefit and there not be some kind of, you know, level where, where, where we don't pay. We don't want to put the city on the hook for contributions, and we don't want to jeopardize the city, the system in any way. So that's where the 113% came from. It was either you get the 400, and if the system falls to 113% or below, you don't get the 400. So I know, when you start talking about, well, you know, we can do 150, we can do 200, it's, it is very complicated. We could do it, we can do anything in the retirement office. But it's a very complicated way to grant that benefit versus an all or nothing scenario with that baseline of 113%.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being with us this evening, and thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Because it, it sort of was a transition from the discussion item to the Agenda Address, I intentionally let the clock keep running, but we are at Agenda Address, which does have a two-minute limit. Protam Carrington.
Oh, yes, President McGinnis. Ms. Louise Gates?
[inaudible]
Ms. Dunn, I don't know if you want to speak again. I know you spoke earlier. Okay. Mr. Quincy Stewart?
Just, just on item number three on the Juneteenth thing, I applaud the, the fact that you're going to, to do this, this proclamation, whatever it is, for the Juneteenth, Juneteenth. In addition to that, I wanted to say that there's going to be an event, a Juneteenth event, sponsored by the Oakland County Ministerial Fellowship, Oakland Forward, Honors, OCN, Trinity Health, Pontiac United. It's going to be on June 17th, 18th, and 19th, on the Welcome Missionary Baptist Church campus. There's going to be lots of bands and music playing, including myself. And so I want to announce that to the city, that there's going to be, this is going to be a really great event. Lots of artists, I'm the person responsible for getting all the artists, so I've got mostly Pontiac artists, Melanie Rutherford, myself, every Bubby, Keith Bubby Webb, everybody you can think of in Pontiac will be performing on Friday. So Friday's going to be Young People Night, so that's going to be spoken word, and all the young people who never get an opportunity to do the spoken word thing, or the rap and all of this stuff, and it's going to all be clean. And then-
The citizen, the citizen has the floor. Conversations please cease.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart.
And Saturday, there's going to be, that's R&B night, and so that'll be Melanie Rutherford, her band Fat Greasy, and some other people. And then Sunday's going to be jazz, and that'll be myself, a big band from Detroit, and several people. As a matter of fact, Tony Jefferson, there's going to be African drumming, and there's going to be a march from Bag, from the, from the Bagley area street, all, all the way from there to Welcome Missionary Baptist Church, and going past the corner, in recognition of that. And it's also in recognition of Albert Hatchet. So there's a lot more. I'm going to announce some of that next week, but I just wanted you guys to know, there's going to be a really, really nice thing. And please stop by, you've got three days to come by. There's going to be step contests, multi arts, music stage, historical information, bubble machine, bouncers, kiddie land, climbing walls, quilting, you name it. And it's all Pontiac people, for the most part. So I just wanted to kind of hijack that and kind of make the announcement. So sorry for the shameless plug, but please come out. Thank you.
You addressed the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller?
Mr. Carrington, what, I got two minutes?
Yeah, two minutes, ma'am, too.
Let me go fast, because I really was going to speak on that marijuana, but I have to speak on the GERS. You know, GERS has been around a long time. The one thing the old council did, we made sure that the citizens didn't have to pay for our debts. You know, it's, it's unfortunate. And I have said this from day one, I have posted on our website with our members, let's go to court. Let's go to court and let the court decide this. Because at the last minute, Cypria's not here. That's ironic, that Cypria's not here. That's, that's not a good sign right there. Cypria's not here. We've been arguing for over eight, 12 years. Let's go to court. Let the court decide what needs to be done. And so everybody can be and said, because I think at the end of the day, everybody will respect that. That's the way I see it. Now, also, I wanted to get on this marijuana. And I'm going to be, Mr. Nicholson, when you, when I agree, I agree with you. You right on, you right on turn when I was looking at that presentation. That was nothing but a political, thank you for voting for me, or, hi. These are the same people that come up here day after day, and citizens are not stupid. That's something you guys really play off, you know, we're not so stupid. Let me tell you something. And I'm calling out my own pastor, and I don't go there anymore, that's why I don't go there anymore. Pastor Jones and everything, even the Joan 10. There's other pastors in the city need some, release of relief, too. Why are pastors in marijuana? Why you want to be in marijuana? You, that's why people, and I'm just going to go there, that's why violence, people look at the way you live. Everywhere I go, even though I'm not a council person, I still got to represent the rest of my life, where I go and what I do, because they watch you and how you live. You can't tell me what to do if you don't do it. Why is churches in marijuana? Answer that. And I don't care, Pastor Jones, anybody else is in this. Coleman Yocum, there's a program on school, Panthers, the Panthers, the kids, Family Helping Families. They are people that's working with people that live in under bridges, need homes. Come on, marijuana people, do the right thing. Politics, then tell me this ain't politics.
Well, thank you, ma'am. That concludes Agenda Address. President McGinnis?
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution recognizing Juneteenth in Pontiac?
So move.
Support.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Carrington. That motion is now before us. I want to acknowledge and give the floor to Councilman Goodman, who drafted a great deal of this resolution, essentially drafted this resolution. And want to acknowledge, we have under the mayor's communication, and acknowledged the mayor's office and the city of Pontiac firmly committed to recognizing Juneteenth, and want to give the floor to him as well, to share his intentions with City Hall as it relates to Juneteenth. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
So good evening, everyone. I wrote this from a perspective that is informed by being a black person that has lived in America my entire life, and having the historical context for many of these things, just living in the time that we do now. So I wanted to make sure when we draft this resolution, we don't do the standard way of talking about things in a past tense way, as if none of this is still relevant to our current problems. And also acknowledging the painful history in which is black history and African-American history in this country. So when I wrote this, I pointed out, you know, the, the, the importance of slavery on the United States, and how most of the economic development came from that. And touching on all of the really deep-cutting parts of, again, what is black history when having this conversation, as well as talking about why Juneteenth is important. You know, the fact that it took almost two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation for many black slaves in the South to be freed, just out of the sole fact that there were not Union soldiers to enforce those rules. And the way that, again, all of these things have come to show themselves over hundreds of years. So I'm extremely happy to be able to have written this in its entirety, as well as the support from all of my colleagues and the mayor's office.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal, want to give you the floor.
Well, thank you for an exceptionally well-written proclamation or resolution, Councilman Goodman. I was impressed, as I so often am, by your eloquence. But I wanted to just talk very briefly about some important substantive news. We have decided in the executive branch to make sure that we truly recognize Juneteenth as an actual, real holiday with everything that that represents. And so we are going to be closed here at City Hall on Juneteenth. The federal government added Juneteenth as an official-recognized federal holiday. The city has long observed all of the federal holidays, and although those were, been enumerated in the past and had not previously included Juneteenth, for whatever reason, we believe that it's long overdue, that we now recognize Juneteenth as the official federal holiday that it is, and we will be recognizing that here at City Hall for city employees. Again, the federal government should have long ago recognized Juneteenth as a federal holiday. Probably the city should have long ago recognized it as a city holiday for city employees, even before the federal government did so. But we're really excited to share the news that we are now officially recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday for all official purposes, including giving city employees that day off and closing City Hall on that day.
And so for the community's benefit, that would be Monday, June 20th, due to where the calendar falls this year?
That's right. Since June 19th falls on a Sunday, it will be recognized on the following day, the following Monday, June 20th. And so City Hall will be closed on June 20th this year.
Thank you. Further discussion. Council, President Protam Carrington?
Oh, yes. I also like to thank Councilman Goodman for an excellent-written resolution. It was very powerful. And it's just important, you know, important for us to remember that the purpose of Juneteenth is to uplift our community, to govern this, and our radical love for each and everyone in our community. This is, this is our important moment, so we can say we're still here, regardless of how hard our struggle is. We, as an African-American community, we are still here. And as a kid traveling to the South, I used to hear my elders talk about their experiences. And to, and I learned to understand what it was to manage their survival in a country that didn't really care for us, for a country that beat us down constantly, four or four or 500 years in this country. So we are resilient people, and I understand when my elders talked about self-determination. And at this time, we need to use this time to continue to talk about self-determination, and how we work in our communities to better our communities and build for our communities ourselves. That's all.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, President. You know, I want to thank Councilman Goodman for what he's done with this, this, this resolution. As I sit here, I'm reminded that my grandfather on my dad's side was a slave. Think about that. My grandfather on my father's side was a slave. And so it means a lot to me when I read things and I see things about what's going on with our culture and with our people, because I know the struggle that has existed and continues to exist for this country to be what it is truly supposed to be. I've served in the service, I've done due diligence, and yet again, we, even in this century, are still wrestling with the issue of fairness, equality, justice. And so I thank the city, and I thank mayor for at least acknowledging that in Pontiac during this season. We will be free on June 19th or June 20th, as it is today. Thank you very much, Mayor Grimal and the administration.
Thank you. Other discussion. Hearing no further discussion. Speaker's list is exhausted. Roll call on the adoption of the council resolution recognizing Juneteenth in Pontiac. Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis? Yes. Six yeas, no nays. That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution inquiring about the status of Oakland County offices moving to downtown Pontiac?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington. So, as many of you know, Pontiac is the county seat for Oakland County, has been as long as Oakland County has existed since 1820. But in the late 1950s, they built a county courthouse at 1200 North Telegraph, just inside the city limit, so they're still located inside-
District 2.
The boundary, District 2, all right, shout out to that. But, but not any longer in downtown Pontiac. And there were some remaining offices in the 1960s, but those have moved as well. So their operations and then county employees leaving downtown Pontiac decades ago had a very direct impact on less foot traffic, less consumer support, less commercial activity in downtown Pontiac. And Oakland County Executive David Coulter has spoken publicly about his commitment to supporting the city of Pontiac, and specifically growing downtown Pontiac by relocating some offices and departments and employees back to downtown Pontiac for the first time in decades. And so this- And so this resolution is to follow up on that previous pledge and formally said, hey, where we are, where we at on that? So that's what this does. So that way we can formally request an update from the Office of the County Executive on when and to what degree Pontiac residents can expect to see substantial Oakland County operations and county employees relocated in downtown Pontiac. So that's the gist of it. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, this is really, really important. County Executive Coulter campaigned on a pledge of moving a significant number of county employees to downtown Pontiac. Having county employees downtown is very helpful to bringing downtown back because having employee, more employees downtown means people going out to lunch and frequenting restaurants and spending time after work downtown. And as President McGinnis alluded to, moving so many city employees, excuse me, county employees out of downtown to this county complex, really frankly, in the middle of nowhere, certainly at the time and even today, way out in the far northwest corner of the city and the county executive's office has been in Waterford, actually, and not even in the city at all for 10-plus years now, has had a hugely detrimental effect on downtown Pontiac and on the city as a whole. And so this is long overdue, bringing county employees back downtown. It's something that I personally talked with the county executive about, and the city council passing this resolution will help give more impetus to those efforts. I know that some city council people have talked to the county executive's office as well, and it'll certainly strengthen my hand as I continue to have those conversations with the county executive. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list exhausted. We now are at roll call on the adoption of the council resolution inquiring about the status of Oakland County offices moving to downtown Pontiac. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution welcoming United States Senator Gary Peters' opening offices in downtown?
Moved by Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Goodman. That motion is now before us. When we had the swearing-in ceremony for the new mayor and the new city council, United States Senator Gary Peters was present and stated publicly to the audience that he'd be relocating his federal offices to downtown Pontiac, which would be the first time in decades, maybe ever, that a United States Senator has had a federal office in downtown Pontiac. So very welcome news. My understanding is that he is closer to formally opening that. So this is a way of, again, trying to nudge that forward and confirm that information so that way residents can benefit from it. As somebody who's worked in a federal office before, there's a real advantage to geographically having those services physically here where residents can straight up access those offices to get access to veterans benefits, Social Security Administration benefits, navigating challenges with the U.S. Postal Service, and thousands of other federal agencies and services. So looking forward to that, that development and inquiring about where things stand. Any further discussion?
Michael.
Councilman Goodman.
Um, I'll just say I'm really excited to, to see this. To me, the points that Council President made, that is extremely important to, well, as I've been, as I've heard and have repeated multiple times, Pontiac is the center of the bike spoke, also the center of the universe as it should be. So being able to have people, especially our senator, come and bring his office to the city of Pontiac where it is the center of my universe, is extremely, extremely heartening. And I just hope that in the future, for any elected official, especially when it comes to federal level, continue to do things like this more often in the city of Pontiac, not just when it is, uh, I'll say politically convenient, but also in times where, you know, that, that true allyship and leadership is needed in our city. So I think even, you know, just outside of the upswing as we seem to be on right now, to make sure and, you know, really hold people accountable and make it be heard that we want them here, not just only in the good times, but also in the rough ones.
Further discussion? Councilman James.
I'd just like to say that it's great to see us showing this kind of initiative. It's great. It certainly is a great move to have Senator Peters open an office in downtown Pontiac, but it's even greater to see us showing that initiative and, and showing that we have a very good memory when people tell us things that we're not going to forget it and we're going to step up to it. So good, good, good move.
Any further discussion? Speaker's list exhausted. We are moving to roll call on the adoption of the council resolution welcoming United States Senator Gary Peters' opening offices in downtown Pontiac. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve entering into a municipal and community credit contract for fiscal year 2023 between the city of Pontiac and SMART?
So move.
Support.
It's been moved simultaneously, but moved by Goodman, seconded by Nicholson. So that motion is now before us. Want to give the floor to the mayor and administration for some initial context.
Well, thank you again, President McGinnis. So there are a couple of local, and by local, I mean at the, at the city or township level, funding opportunities for local transportation, public transportation. I think everyone's familiar with SMART and SMART obviously operates line service of buses throughout Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne Counties. But in addition to that, uh, there are what are called municipal credits and community credits. Municipal credits are funded by the state of Michigan and community credits are funded through SMART. And these credits can be utilized by local municipalities, cities or counties, to supplement the general SMART line service with very localized transportation. And the amounts of money are significant. This year, this coming year, beginning July 1st, the city of Pontiac qualifies for a little over $57,000 in municipal credits and a little over $112,000 in community credits for a grand total of about $170,000 in combined municipal and community credits. This money has been available to the city for many, many years, but for reasons that aren't clear to me, in the past, the city has not utilized these dollars. So the city in past years has been leaving, you know, 150,000 plus dollars on the table that could have been used for local public transit. This is something that I talked about over the past year. This is our opportunity to do this. The city itself probably is not positioned currently anyway to actually operate the buses themselves. So our proposal is that we approve this contract with SMART to access these community and municipal credits, and then we, as a city, go out with an RFP to solicit some entity or private company to submit proposals to utilize these dollars to operate some supplemental, a local shuttle service or bus service locally to supplement transit needs. But the first step in that is entering into a contract with SMART to make this roughly $170,000 available to the city. And then the city can go out and issue an RFP for a specific operator to utilize this. And obviously, any, uh, potential operators' contract would have to come before city council for approval. But we have a lot of transit needs that are not fully addressed and, uh, fully, um, fulfilled through the SMART line service on major roads. We have people who need to get to grocery stores or doctor's appointments. We have a youth recreation program that's about to start up, and I'll talk more about that in my closing comments. And young people need transportation assistance to get to youth recreation locations. So there are an enormous amount of transportation needs in our community that are currently going unfilled, and this is a great opportunity to utilize $170,000 at no cost to the city, money that's been available for many, many years but has been left on the table. We can now utilize these funds and actually deliver enhanced transportation services to our residents. And with that, I'd love to invite Madonna Van Fossen from SMART to say a few words about the program and how it works. And, uh, I know I outlined the details. Correct me if, if I was mistaken in any regard. Feel free to add to that and talk about additional details. Thanks for being here, Ms. Van Fossen, on very short notice. So thanks so much for joining us.
You're quite welcome. And can I just say I'm so excited about the things that are happening in Pontiac? It's awesome with, with the celebrations, the June 19th, the offices that are opening up. It's not related to SMART, but I'm really excited and congratulations on what a great job you're all doing. So what Mayor Grimal is referring to, a lot of communities have a local transportation program, which in SMART's world is called a community partner program with SMART. And we established this program back in the, I think it was the 80s or the early 90s when SMART communities were opt-in or opt-out, or communities had the choice to opt into SMART or opt-out. And a lot of communities that opted out, you know, SMART was concerned because they did not have transportation. So we developed the community partner program, which gained us national recognition for this program. And what it does is we leverage funding on behalf of any community that wants to establish a local transportation program. We leverage the funding through the federal government for their vehicles. So basically, we get the vehicles, the funding for the vehicles, we buy the vehicles, they're titled to SMART, and we lease them to our community partners for nothing. The agreement is that they have to maintain the vehicles, they carry the insurance for the vehicles, they pay for the drivers for the upkeep, the maintenance, that type of thing for the vehicles. But you basically get the vehicles for nothing. You know, we get, the vehicles stay titled to SMART, and the requirement is that the communities that have these vehicles, they complete weekly and quarterly reports with statistical data that we have to provide to the federal government that have to do with the vehicles, mileage, that type of thing. So it's a great program that a lot of communities within Oakland County, there are 61 communities within Oakland County, and I believe, I want to say that there are 36 community partner programs. Most are opt-in communities, some are opt-out communities. As Mayor Grimal said, communities that do not want to operate the program themselves, for example, Southfield operates their own local transportation program called TOS. The community of, for example, Birmingham, Franklin, Beverly Hills, they do not want to operate their own program, so they partnered or they contract with the senior program through the city of Birmingham called NEXT. It used to be Birmingham Area Senior Coordinating Council. So they contract with NEXT to provide their transportation. So you have the ability to do either or. One of the benefits of having a community partner program, in addition to the services that SMART offers, like Mayor Grimal said, we have the fixed route service, and we also have the connector service, which is a reservation-based service that we operate, and it is mainly geared towards seniors and disabled residents. However, any resident can make a reservation to utilize the connector service. But our connector service, I don't want to say it's limited, but it only runs five days a week from six in the morning till, I believe it's six o'clock at night, five o'clock at night. And it's limited because it's within 10 miles of your pickup location, but it only operates in opt-in communities. So for example, if you wanted to use the connector service to go to your doctor's office, you lived in Pontiac, but your doctor was in Waterford, the connector service could not take you because Waterford is an opt-out community. The local transportation programs, the benefit of them is SMART has no jurisdiction over how you operate your program or where you go. We, you have to follow the federal guidelines, which any transportation program has to, but you can, for example, Brandon Township, for example, they will, they have certain riders that are veterans who need to go down to the Detroit Veterans Hospital. So they take them from Brandon Township to Detroit for their needs. Not all community partner programs do that. You get to set your parameters, where you're going to travel. You get to set your time, whether you want to operate five days a week, seven days a week, two days a week. You also have the ability to, if you want, to determine who runs. SMART cannot provide a service that could be compared to a charter service or, for example, like a school service. We can't compete with that because of the public funding. So we're, we can't narrow it down to exclude some people, if, you know, with, for, to provide school transportation. The community partners, however, can, if they so choose, for example, he talked about after-school programs, you could possibly provide transportation, transportation to the children to after-school programs. The, the bottom line is you get to set your parameters for how your program operates. You get to decide what you want to charge, if you want to charge anything, you get to decide where you get to go, how far you'll go, those types of things. Whereas, like I said, the SMART connector service, we have to stay within the parameters of our guidelines. So it's, um, it's a good program. It's a, do you have any questions?
Who would like to be recognized? Councilman Goodman.
Uh, I'm just happy to see something involving fixing the holes in transit that we have in general, uh, sitting at this diocese. So I'm excited to see that. And I truly do appreciate the help and work between SMART and the city. I think the one thing I want to bring up is, you know, going down the line for the administration side. So I'm looking at the, uh, the project description. So obviously, we look at the service area and I see, see Pontiac as the boundaries currently while we're having SMART do it, correct?
Yes.
And obviously, that is because of whatever rules and regulations that are in place for you, correct?
Right. You mean, we have been operating the service.
So, and so, uh, I'm looking at the contract that is from the administration side. So when we sign this contract, I know the first couple of months will be administered by SMART, correct?
Yes.
So for those first couple of months, obviously, the, the boundaries are within city of Pontiac limits because of what you can do.
Correct.
So I want to say for the city, uh, I think there needs to be a real thought process about how we want to go about this because obviously, there are going to be many residents who are going to need to venture outside of city limits for, for needed services, whether it just be simply, uh, attending college. Because, you know, OCC is without, is outside of city boundaries, for example, so is OU. And also, every major grocery store are all outside of city limits. So when we have this conversation, when we implement it going, you know, after SMART, we need to make sure that we are having a full, well-thought-out plan for, uh, what are going to need to be the service areas or, you know, specific, uh, types of locations that people are going to need to go to when we figure, when we figure this out. Because for our own sake, when we, when we figure this out, when we have control of it, city of boundary, city of Pontiac boundaries will not be enough when we are administering it. But to digress, I still thank you very much for the help in that process.
And let me just add one thing. We have a new service that you might have heard of, you might not have. It's been in existence now since September of last year, the SMART Flex, which is an on-demand service. It's like an Uber service. But again, that is limited to, to the boundaries of Pontiac and Auburn Hills. So when you mentioned the grocery stores, you, you actually can take a SMART Flex and get to a grocery store. Or another reason the SMART Flex was set up was to get people from their home or whatever to a fixed route, which now opens up the door to places that they can go outside of the Pontiac boundaries.
Yes, and so.
So that will still be in existence as well.
Yes, and it, it, the, the point is to make sure that we're, you know, taking the Swiss trees approach as much as possible to fill in all those holes.
Right.
Because I've been Carlos for the past two weeks, so I've been actually using SMART and SMART Flex. And one of the issues, one of the benefits is that it has that, uh, paratransit type of situation, but it's also not the most on-demand in the world. There are often sometimes not vehicles available. So again, just making sure that we have done everything we can when we have the ability to, to fill in as many of those holes as possible with this implementation to make sure that we're not, uh, you know, leaving any residents out that we can afford not to. So.
Others wish to, Mayor Grimal?
Yep, completely agree, Councilman Goodman. And, you know, obviously, $170,000 is a substantial amount of money and money we should be utilizing for transit and not leaving on the leaving on the table. But it will not be able to fund everything we might wish to see, so we'll, we'll want to be mindful about our priorities. The one item I did want to point out is that in the proposed contract, Exhibit A does say, when it comes to the service area, city of Pontiac boundaries, but it also adds, this area can be expanded if needed when the agency selected takes over in September pursuant to the RFP. So we do foresee that the scope of service may be broader than our city's boundaries with communities like Auburn Hills, or Waterford, or potentially others in mind.
Councilwoman James, and then Councilman Goodman?
Yeah. I think this is a great program. The $170,000, though, Mayor, with the cost of gas, may not be as, as lucrative as what you're thinking. But my question is, currently, for this fiscal year, we qualify for these two sums, but how are those sums set? And how does that happen? Will they be similar amounts? Or just, just how, how is that set?
So the municipal credits, like Mayor Grimal said, they come from the state of Michigan, and those amounts are determined by population.
Okay.
So since the 2020 census, there was a slight increase in the amount of money that Pontiac had received. The community credits are actually a refund of the percentage of the millage money that is collected within your community. So what SMART does is they take a look at the amount of money collected, and then they take a look at the services that we operate and offer within your community, and our costs, and then we give back to the community a percentage of that total amount collected, so they can, you know, establish a local transportation program, or use those funds to provide additional transportation services to their residents. So for example, Kegel Harbor is an opt-out community. So they only get their municipal credits. And I think they get about, I want to say about, let's just say $3,000. It's not much more than that. But they keep, what they do with their money is they charter a bus a couple times a year for seniors and disabled residents to take a field trip, or whatever you want to call it. You know, so they're providing a transportation service for their residents using that, that funding. So the community, and the municipal credits technically, legally, need to be spent within two years of the year that they were awarded. And the community credits that come from SMART, a little more lenient, and they had, they're, you are, there's a three-year limit to spend those funds. And I just want to also point out that SMART will absolutely work with the city to help, you know, all of our resources can be made available to plan what your program looks like. We did this, put a program together when Mayor Waterman was in office back in 2016. I don't know if anybody remembers. We held three different summits and got all kinds of input, worked on this project for about nine months, had it all ready to present to the council, and it never was, to, to re, to bring back or to establish, re-establish a local transportation program. So this has been in the works since 2016. And I commend the council and the mayor for bringing it back, because I get calls all the time, what can we do? What can we do?
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
Just a quick clarifying question, something that you just said. When it comes to the communities that have the municipal credits, is that how communities such as like Waterford fund like WODA, for example?
Waterford, yes. They, they turn their community, or their municipal credits over to WODA, but they also pay an additional $150,000 to WODA to belong to the WODA system.
Okay.
There are, the communities that make up WODA, Highland Township, White Lake, Wald Lake, and Waterford Township, each pay, in addition to their municipal credits that they give to WODA, $150,000 minimum, and sometimes it's been more since they were first started, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Others that wish to have the floor?
All right. Mayor Grimal, obviously, there's a sort of a good deal of to-be-determined baked into this cake. And request for proposal, I anticipate that that would come before city council, before, or sort of the contract, you know, the recommended recipient, the winning proposal, if you will, that will come before city council. Share with us when we should next expect a bite at this apple, and should I amend the resolution? Oh, I'm not asking you. I'm just saying, this is where I'm thinking, but let me know if I might not need to take that step, where we require by September 30th of this calendar year, where it's sort of communicated to us, presented to the city council, so to communicate to the, the people what should be expected for the utilization of credits for this year. But as I'm jouting that down, it's occurring to me, contract action will come to us, which would be an opportunity for us to flesh that out. So I just want to give you a chance to respond.
Yeah. So let me, let me acknowledge, too, I totally agree with Councilwoman James' point, which is why I tried to moderate expectations when I heard Councilman Goodman talking about all the needs out there, and why I said, you know, it's certainly nothing to shake a stick at, $170,000, and we, we definitely need to utilize it and not leave it on the table. But I do want to just emphasize that, you know, that money can only go so far, and we need to be mindful of priorities, as I said earlier. So I agree with that, and it's important that we, we have realistic expectations about how far that's going to go. But with that point in mind, we would love to have city council input on putting together the RFP, because the way the RFP is written is going to be very important in terms of the kinds of services we're suggesting respondents look at delivering. And one of the reasons why we're anticipating not having delivery in place until September 1st, which is over two and a half months away, is because we want to be mindful about how we write the RFP, and we want city council involvement in that process, you know, to whatever degree city council wants to be involved. And then, as we get proposals in response to the RFP, we'd love to have some city council involvement in going through those proposals and helping us make a recommendation for selection before city council. Because, again, the specifics of what services are provided is really, really important here. And yes, the ultimate contract with whoever is recommended through that RFP process will speak to that. But we'd love to have some city council involvement in the drafting of the RFP, and in how that selection is made, and how that contract language is put together in advance of the city council meeting where that contract is approved. So we welcome your input and involvement. And as a result, we wanted to make sure that we were baking in enough time for that RFP process to accomplish that involvement.
Others that wish to have the floor. Councilman Nicholson?
I know there were some, not every RFP is going to get as much attention as some. And I think transportation may be one that's quite difficult, just because I know that there's a limited amount of providers, and the, the cost of operating those services has certainly gone way up. I don't want us to fall back into the situation we were in last week, where we had an RFP process that only really garnered one, I mean, it was last week or the week before, one response. So I think if, if we're not involved in just the feedback on what the actual template of the document looks like, I think even if that document is sent to us, in some circumstances, I'm sure it makes sense not to, if we're not going to want 30,000 respondents to something very simple. But if there are opportunities for us to be able to disseminate RFPs as well, just rather than not posting them, you know, just posting them, I think we can certainly be helpful in that respect.
I welcome that. And we always welcome that, frankly. I mean, yes, I guess theoretically, we could get to a point where there are too many responses, just in terms of the administrative workload of sifting through them. But at no point in time have we ever been close to that point, and I don't foresee us getting close to that point. So the more responses, the merrier. And we welcome city council helping disseminate these RFPs far and wide to try to get as many quality responses as possible.
Yeah. So I think as part of maybe that process of sending out a RFP, it should come to, to us to say, here's an RFP that's available. It should be sent out on July 1st. Please let us know where you've sent it. That sort of thing could, could be helpful.
And I welcome that. And in fact, I don't see any reason why we can't do that as a matter of course with all RFPs.
Great.
And, you know, some of them you may choose to disseminate, others you may choose not to. But we certainly can send RFPs to all of council as a matter of course, any, right at the same time we post them. And that way, if you know anybody who you think might be interested in submitting a proposal, you can send it to them.
A show of hands from council members that might be interested in that RFP process for this effort?
You're here.
So, won't be all four, but that's helpful for council leadership to know when we advance names to the mayor. There's always quorum issues. We never want to create a scenario where a conversation leads to a requiring of a posting meeting and things of that sort. So the council leadership will provide to the mayor's office a handful of council names who will represent the council on the process.
Perfect. And I, I noticed three hands go up, but I noticed that you said there were four hands. So I
I thought I saw, did I see James and Parker? And then Nicholson and Goodman?
Okay, got it. Okay, I think I missed Councilwoman James's hand.
Can I add something real quick? If it's helpful, I mean, we, I can, if you, if you want, SMART would be willing to help, you know, participate in that. And/or I can get copies of contracts that other communities have had with their providers that might be helpful, just to take a look at.
For sure. Both of those would be really helpful.
Okay.
And I, I make a motion to amend the resolution to add a final, and further resolved, the mayor's office shall present to the city council no later than September 30th, 2022, to report on how the credits shall be utilized for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. That's a, most likely would have happened anyway, but might as well put it in there just because there is a great deal of to-be-determined in this. So is there a second to that amendment?
Support.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that amendment?
Hearing no further discussion on the adoption of the amendment adding, and further resolved, the mayor's office shall present to the city council no later than September 30th, 2022, to report on how the credits shall be utilized for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Who was it moved by?
McGinnis.
Oh, moved by McGinnis, seconded by Goodman.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So we're now at the main resolution as amended. Any further discussion? Any further amendments? Hearing no further discussion. We move on. Roll call, the adoption of the resolution to approve entering a municipal and community credit contract for the fiscal year between the city of Pontiac and SMART. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, and thank you very much, Ms. Van Fossen, for being here. I do have a closing question. Do the participating municipalities, they essentially enter into these new contracts annually, correct?
Yes. It's an annual agreement. And the, and with regards to the funding, will it go up or down? The municipal credits will most likely not change until there's another census. The community credits, though, can have an increase. I think the increase from last year was a 3% increase. So there can be increases on those credits annually. It's not a given, but usually they are.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations again.
With that, we are now at communications. The Michigan Secretary of State Driver's License Restoration Clinic is on June 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., held at the Flagstar Strand Theater, 12th North Saginaw in downtown Pontiac. Art Fish Fun is June 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Bodett Park, 786 Orchard Lake Road in Pontiac. The Pontiac Public Library's Summer Reading Carnival is June 18th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., held at the Pontiac Public Library, 60 East Pike Street in Pontiac. Juneteenth, That Day of Jubilation Dramatic Reading Theater is June 18th at 2:00 p.m., held at the Bowen's Senior Center, 52 Bagley Street in Pontiac. And the Power Company Kids Club and Deputies for Kids Fun in the Field is July 6th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Aaron Perry Park in Pontiac. We are now at mayor's office communications. The mayor has stepped out of the room, but he communicated that during the resolution regarding Juneteenth, about the city's recognition of the federal holiday and being closed on June 20th. Clerk's office, you want to give us the goods on the next two budget action of the city council?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the city council will continue its budget deliberations on the proposed 2022, 23 fiscal year budget tomorrow, Wednesday, June 8th, from 5:00 until 7:00. We'll focus on proposed amendments to the budget by the city council. And then again, on Thursday, June 9th, from 5:00 until 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to my colleagues, I did send an email update to everyone in terms of a proposed method for how we will deliberate on those recommended changes. Let me know if you have any questions on that moving forward. With that, we are now at public comment. Pro temp Carrington, you have the floor?
Thank you, President McGinnis. We have first a public comment. Ms. Carol Wilkins?
Good evening. My name is Carol Wilkins. And good evening, mayor and city council. I am here tonight to come before this board about the $400 temporary raise that ended in February for the retirees. On March 30th of 2022, I attended a GURBS Board of Trustee member, a meeting, which the representatives were from GURBS, CEPRAS, City of Pontiac, and I believe also VIBA. It was agreed at that time that money be placed in escrow for the $400 for the retirees to receive that. Now, my understanding that date, that it was about $57 million to go into that escrow account, but I see now it's still in the old GURBS account. Also, I wanted to know, are we playing Monopoly? Every time we move to a different square on the board, we're moving back again. We retirees need that money. As I seen example of the both attorneys and Deborah Munson, all of them have different sayings and different agreements. And what the bottom line is, there's no liability to the city, because that fund is already there. That's fund from GURBS have been sitting there, because they already know how many people's retired. They already know that people are dying. We got, what, 30 more good years with the people left? So why are you calling it a liability? We need to go ahead, put amendment together, get us our money. That's our money. Why are we playing around with it? I came here for answers, and I would like some answers to this. I know we got this 130%, but like Deborah explained, that 130% is already up here on this shelf. And when it goes down to 122 or 119, we can no longer get that $400 a month. We understand that. That would make us not have a pension. But what we're doing now is just making excuses. I'm ashamed of Pontiac. I want it said and done, that all of us need to be together on this, but we're not. The one thing we're together on is, we've not got the $400 yet. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Carrie Miller?
Hello, everyone. My name is Carrie Miller. I work for Oakland University. I'm here to bring your attention to a program that is offered this summer called Math Corps at OU. This program is starting on July 11th and goes until August 5th. This is a Monday through Thursday program that This is a Monday through Thursday program that happens through, from 8:30 in the morning to 2:30 p.m. This is available to 7th and 8th graders, incoming 7th and 8th graders, so people who just finished 6th and 7th grade, that are needing help with their math skills. So this is a completely free program to the participants. Breakfast and lunch are provided at no cost to them. All of their supplies are provided. Transportation to and from Oakland University is also provided. The program has been very successful at Wayne State University since 1991. It's also, there's satellite locations in Ypsilanti, Cleveland, Philadelphia, and Utica, New York. About three years ago, we brought this to Oakland University. In the first two years, we had to do virtually because of COVID, and this is the first year where we're going to be doing things in person. We have currently 14 students registered, but we are hoping to get 40 at some point. So that's one of the reasons why I'm bringing this to everybody's attention, so that if you have family members, friends, anybody in your community that you know of that has 7th and 8th graders that might benefit from this program, please let them know. I have flyers with me here that are in both English and Spanish to set up at City Hall to give to everybody here. I also have my own personal business card, so if anybody has questions, they can also contact me. To let you know a little bit about the program itself, it's to help elevate incoming 7th and 8th graders who have challenges related to their math skills. It's to help prepare them for the math classes that they're going to be taking in their next year of school. This program is designed to build confidence by empowering the students, to foster a sense of family, to teach the students to care and respect for one another and themselves, and to provide the students with the opportunities that they deserve. This is also a great pipeline so that the students who are benefiting from the program now as 7th and 8th graders end up building their confidence so much to the point that they then become the teaching assistants that we employ from the high schools. And then also, it's a very fun program. It's actually very much, there's a lot of recreation built into it. There's a minister of humor to actually help make sure that the class subjects stay very light. And then just to let you know some benefits of the program, so far, again, we've only been doing this for two years, and it's been during COVID, so we haven't had that much participation yet, which is one of the reasons why I'm here. We've had 38 students so far complete the program. Each student are administered a pre and post test when they begin the program and when they complete the program. The average growth from pre to post test is about 52 percentage points. Individual growth ranged from 11% of improvement to 93% improvement in just four weeks. And every single student, their capacity improved through this program.
That does conclude your time, but do you want to give a reiteration of how people can find out more?
Absolutely. So the program is at mathcor.org/pontiac. Again, I have flyers here, and then I'll also share that information on the Facebook Live in the comment section so that people can look up that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Claude Vinegar.
Good evening. As I said, my name's Claude Vinegar, and mine is just one where I'm retired and I like trying to help our park at the end of the street look good. And so, since I'm using my time to try to clean up the park, the ones that get paid or the ones that actually cut the grass and getting the money for it, I'm looking for them to do just as good a job or better than what I'm doing. And I was disappointed when I went there just before this last holiday. And you know the bench that they have, where they sit down and eat? They hadn't even cut around it, and the grass was all up in it. I went on a Sunday and did that so, you know, people could sit down there and feel like nothing's going to be crawling on their legs. So I'm just wondering if we are hiring these people to cut our grass at these parks, are we monitoring it anyway? Or what, you know, I don't know what's done to monitor it so that they will do as good a job as you would expect in your yard? That's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Could I ask a clarifying question? Which park in question?
Charlie Harrison.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, you have the scoop.
Charlie Harrison Park.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Renee Beckley.
Tell you this, William Carrington, that Gemma Plaza has a big mess back there, and it's a nuisance. Do something about it. Find them every day. Garbage, I don't know what all's back there. I called down here, this apartment down here, this building safety, and they say it can't do anything. But I want that mess gone. We have a rat over there, and it's going to be all through the neighborhood. Okay? Some people are asking me about, somebody wrote a letter attacking City Hall staff and wondered, did I write? I said, no, I don't do that. I say things in person and into the person's face so they can hear them. Now, Angela Powell should not work at the Pontiac City Mayor's Office. She is an Oakland County Commissioner, elected official. She serves where she serves Pontiac. This is a clear conflict of interest, and it sounds like corruption. The county commission votes on the tax rates of Pontiac. What happens if there is a dispute between the county and the city? She serves as the will of the mayor and as the people that voted her in? That's, something's wrong here. Angela Powell is receiving two incomes. This is called double dipping. Why would she want another job when she already has a job? Angela Powell, you have to choose to be either county commissioner or you're going to be a public relations person for the mayor's office. Now, Tim, I know you should know better than that. She should concentrate and make this district whole again because she was irresponsible as a president. And in 2023, District 2 is going to go for the person that represents, I guess, Waterford and Keegel. That easily could be a Republican because that Democrat can lose. Okay? Now, another school millage, I'm not voting for. Every two years, learn the word grant, school district, grant. Reverend Parker, last month, I did not mention the word crimmo in any of my comments. I said, the release the cops on the community with these surveillance cameras that you and Melanie Rutherford, Mike McGinnis, and William Carrington voted in. I don't want a camera looking at me every time I'm stopped at the stop sign or at the red light. I'm looking up, there's a camera right across the copper or home, right there, Orchard Lake and Bagley. You're a bad councilman for District 5 because you lack listening skills, or you intentionally turn words that the other person say around. You shouldn't be here. Let me see what else I've got. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark.
Good afternoon. I'm in District 1. I'm here to talk about, and Mr. Carrington, I have some documents I want to share with you privately, if that's okay with you, at the end of the section. Code enforcement, our problems that we have, this is a picture on South Boulevard of cars, empty cars, just parked in front of the house. This is all over the city of Pontiac. The residents and the taxpayers and the renters should not have to deal with this, especially around the holidays. Traffic is heavy on South Boulevard, AM, PM, all day long. This is what they have to see, and these vehicles are not running. Then we have, we talked about landlords. We have tenants who live in places who have their property out after trash. They set it out intentionally to have it throughout the whole week throughout the city of Pontiac. This person, this is not the only house. These are these landlords who collecting rent from these tenants and not being notified. They're not telling their tenants, you need to put your trash out on those days. Code enforcement are not giving tickets to make these people, look, you disturbing other people in the neighborhood. That's called infringement rights. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller.
Got to move fast because there's several things I want to touch on. First of all, I have pictures too. Let me do mine's. And since I'm not an elected official, so I'm again back and working for all seven districts. So these pictures are going to come from every one district. I drove around today. I didn't have any attention to, I was coming down Woodward, and I was coming down Woodward, the grass on Woodward. This is the street that you come into when you come into the city of Pontiac. These, that's why it bothered me. The grass is so tall that my grandkids were getting lost in some of this grass. Over by Secretary of State and the Social Security Office. The grass is so tall, Parker, you got to call somebody over there. You can get lost in it. They got to cut the grass. I used to make them cut their grass. You're going to have to make them cut the grass. On Perry Street. Oh, my God. I took pictures. Thank you for blowing them up for me. I mean, this is awful. This is our city, y'all. Martin Luther King underneath the bridge. It's so tall, a kid go out there, God help him, they can get raped, beat up. And you know, I heard the council talk about the number one thing. No, the number one problem in Pontiac is crime right now. We got need to do. We got to figure out what to do about the crime. That's, that's the problem with the city of Pontiac right now. It's crime. It's troubling in a word. And like I said, you have to follow by example. A lot of these kids are not seeing example in the ministers in this city and anywhere else, and they don't respect it anymore. Their respect level is gone to nil or none. Perry Street, Pione up Dyke, turf, grass just growed up. These main thurrows coming in the street, the grass is so tall. And Mayor, I believe if it's not the counties, MDOT responsible for these pathways coming off the expressway. Because see, when you come off Martin Luther King and that grass, I almost got hit there, but a person did get hit there and almost lost their life when I was on council. You got to get them to come out and mow their grass coming off those expressways. That is not the city's responsibility. It's not ours, but it is theirs. They need to come cut their grass. They don't do it in any other city, Mayor. Because I pay attention, I be around a lot. Now, my second thing I want to mention is, I see you guys said that we got police officers coming downtown. We keep talking about downtown. What about the neighborhood? How Mr. Peters and all these people come to see their Pontiac, and you ride around, and this is what you see? What about us? What's going to happen with the neighborhood? Why nobody talk about the neighborhood? And I want to get to Smart. I ran Smart. Used to be called Televan Service. I ran that. I could tell you a lot about it. I ran that. First of all, that 170 is not going to go a lot, Mr. Goodman. Because first of all, you got, I had CDL license. I used to get out there and drive my own. See, I'm always been an on-hand person. I drove the vans myself. You got to get a person with CDLs, because you got to have CDLs. And when I was working with Smart, you couldn't really drive, we couldn't carry kids around because the city got to look at the liabilities. It's big. It's very big. So the money is not going to go far as you think. The mayor is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper.
Good evening, council, mayor. I just want to say that you guys are at least moving in the right direction. I had a chance to see, talk to Mrs. Munson outside, and she made a very good and valid point. That is, if the attorneys are working for the bad people, it doesn't matter what the people say. They will do whatever they have to to go against the people and take on those applications. We have the same thing in our city. The people who did the GSA are the attorneys that represent the city right now. Even if you, council, voted for it, you're still going to have to fight for the LC. And I just leave this up here because this is what we talked about and all the different things coming to the citizens. Right now, we could put a Meglev transit system, a pilot in there. We have enough money between the Biden bucks and the MDOT deal. That itself would help because it provides multiple stops here, 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 and here. And we wanted to put a grocery store connected between the two towers. Now, the GSA has the towers. You don't have any assets. But according to Munson, this would be very helpful in retirement plan. Why? Because you would have an asset that would generate revenue through a partnership that would benefit the community. Additionally, I just wanted to point out that a marijuana site's really great, but the average pay is 18 bucks an hour. I'm sorry. Gasoline is 5.20 a gallon right now. I guarantee you'll be at $7 by the end of this year. Who can afford to drive? Food prices up 40%. Electricity is going to rise 15. Water has a 4% compounded average over the next three years, which is going to generate more money than anybody here in City Pontiac can afford. But our, the little city programs guarantees $25 an hour, up to $40 and $50 an hour over a four-year period. Why? Because we have preference for jobs, because we work with the community. We have a wraparound insurance policy. So all the construction workers get paid union dollars, not working behind a deal for, to do a roof for 500 bucks instead of somebody else is doing it for 5,000. All this is things that we need to consider by looking at the little city. And while I agree with Mr. Nicholson that, I'm sorry, Councilman Nicholson, I think I said that right, is right about the people involved, they're the same people. Ultimately, they don't care about the grass. They don't care about how much people are making because in a couple of years, 50% of the citizens in the city won't live here anymore because they won't be able to afford it. Rents are going to go up over $300 and $400 a month. And tell me on federal assistance, you can afford that, if you can afford to drive. You don't have a busted system, you don't have a transit system. But this could all be done with the little cities, and all it takes is a vote from the council along with the mayor to work with you to make this happen. And it can happen overnight. Because, guess what? We've got all the stuff coming here, the Oakland County, the Senate. Well, they'd love to be here if there was a renovated hotel, an office space with a mass transit system, and people getting paid white. And if you do this, we create a bubble over Pontiac through the hyperinflation. Otherwise, people are going to lose everything. That's all I have to say tonight. I'm looking forward to being on a presentation in front of you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our public comment. President McGinnis.
We are now at closing comments. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President McGinnis. Wanted to touch on a couple of items. First of all, I want to thank the gentleman who's been volunteering his time to maintain or help maintain Charlie Harrison Park. That's amazing. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And it's not the only complaint we've gotten about the grass cutting contractor this week. So we've gotten some other complaints about their performance that have come in yesterday and today. We take that very seriously. I know our DPW department is following up with the contractor to make sure that we're holding them accountable, letting them know that that is not acceptable. I've already texted him after hearing your comments this evening to add the Charlie Harrison Park situation to that list. And this is yet another reason why it's so important for us to bring those services back in-house where we can ensure more quality control and have our own employees maintaining our parks and cutting the grass in the parks. As you know, the budget proposal I put forward would, for next spring, spring of 2023, bring grass cutting of city parks back in-house and allow us to have a lot more capacity to do other maintenance work in parks and elsewhere in the city so that we're better maintaining our infrastructure. But again, thank you for your amazing hard work and voluntarism in helping to protect our parks and properly maintain them. Secondly, I appreciate the observations that were shared tonight about blight in the city. Please text me or email me the specific addresses where that blight is occurring so that we can make sure that code enforcement is on top of that. I routinely, obviously, notice blight in the city and let code enforcement know about the blight that I observe, but I can't be everywhere at all times. So please, if you can, Ms. Clark and others, send me those addresses if you haven't already so that we can make sure that code enforcement is on top of that. I agree with the member of the public who observed that the grass along expressways and along exit and entrance ramps on expressways is MDOT's responsibility. We will follow up with them regarding the interchange at Martin Luther King Boulevard and M59 to make sure that M59 is addressing that. It is also MDOT's responsibility to maintain the grass in the public right-of-way along Woodward. So I heard the concern about that, and we'll relay that to MDOT as well. I want to also provide an update regarding the activity of the Anti-Violence Commission. Certainly, some of the tragic events of the past few days are an important reminder of the urgency of the work that the Anti-Violence Commission is doing. As all of you will remember, we appointed an Anti-Violence Commission some time ago. It's composed of over 20 prominent community leaders and activists, and they have recently formed some committees and appointed some- formed some committees and appointed some of their members to those committees. The whole point of the Anti-Violence Commission's work and the work of these committees is to develop strategies and implement strategies to reduce violence from happening in the first place. The Sheriff's Department does a good job of responding to crime and responding to acts of violence, but we collectively, as a community, need to do a lot more to prevent that violence from happening in the first place. And I did just want to share with all of you the specific committees that the Anti-Violence Commission has formed because it sheds some light on the priorities of the Anti-Violence Commission and the kinds of strategies and interventions that they're looking at implementing. One of the committees is Mental Health and Grief Management. Another is Economic Education Opportunities and Initiatives. Another is the Engagement with the Latino Population. Another is Recidivism Education and Support. Another is Faith-Based Engagement. Another is the Education System Engagement Programs and Initiatives, as well as Child Engagement. Another is a Funding Committee to look at how we can raise funds and utilize dollars efficiently to implement some of these strategies. Another is a Law Enforcement Education Committee to better work with law enforcement officers, better educate law enforcement officers, and partner with them around community policing strategies. And then finally, a Neighborhood and Household Committee. How do we better engage with families, households, and neighborhoods to collectively hold one another accountable and do a better job of preventing violence from occurring in the first place? And then finally, I want to share a preliminary update regarding our city's Youth Recreation and Youth Enrichment programming this summer. We'll have a full presentation at the upcoming city council meeting a week from today, but in the meantime, I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that we have a full slate, a robust slate of programming for youth recreation and youth enrichment slated for this summer. Those programs, the summer programming, will begin on June 20th and run through August 20th. And those activities include biddy ball, tee ball, youth volleyball skills and drills, youth golf lessons, flag football, youth track and field, youth basketball skills, drills, and games, dance, tumbling, family fitness, life skills, STEM education with the Kids First Initiative, Flag Star Strand Theater Youth Theater Camp, tennis and reading in the park. And if you'd like to sign up, or you have friends or family members who would like to sign up, there are flyers out in the hallway with this information with the website to sign up on. But I'm going to give you some additional information, especially for those following from home. You can go to www.pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com. So that's www.pontiacrecreation.reck, R-E-C, desk, dot com. You can also call 248-758-3707. And again, next week, we'll have a more, uh, full and robust discussion and presentation around youth recreation, both this summer and longer term here in the city of Pontiac.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle.
Excuse me, no comments, Mr. President.
All right. We move now to council members' closing comments. Councilman Rutherford is ill this evening. I did want to update on her behalf that at a meeting last week of the city council, a District One resident who lives on Franklin Boulevard expressed, among other items, concerns about excessive speed and people cutting through Franklin Boulevard between, um, M59 or here on Orchard Lake Road. We have, the city council and Councilman Rutherford has been in touch with two other residents of Franklin Boulevard that have had those same concerns. We have shared with the administration our inquiry about whether a stop sign can be placed on Franklin Boulevard at Pike Street that might provide some immediate relief, although there's some long-term, uh, aspects that are worth investigating as well. District Two's councilperson, Brett Nicholson, your closing comments.
Good evening. Wanted to remind residents of District Two that our next District Two meeting will not be at our normal location, um, on the 27th, which is, again, always the fourth Monday of every month. At 7:00 PM, we're going to be meeting at Indian Village Park this time to do a park visioning session. Come with your ideas and a dish to pass. We will be having dinner all together in the park. Remember, they're also usually around 100, 150 people, so don't overextend yourself. Bring whatever you like. The, um, uh, Art Fish Fun event that's coming up, Mayor, I wanted to see if before June 11th, we could, um, and before the county does pull into Bodat Park, take a look at the dock. If it did stipulate they would be offering poles and people would be able to be out to fish with Jim Nash, certainly would not want anyone out on that dock. It's not been pulled up any time of year, and it is in bad, bad, bad condition. Uh, and I, um, I don't know if that was a project that someone did at some point in the past, or if this is, uh, um, something the city's been maintaining, but I, I would hate for the county to go out and try to use that dock. Of course, over on the Mill Pond, um, there's plenty of other spaces to get up close to the water. Wanted to update residents. I have done everything to research the lake levels of the mill dam. There was a rumor that, uh, the Water Resource Commissioner was conspiring to, uh, keep the lake levels high for an event that was going on down river, down the river in Auburn Hills. That is not true. It was not the intention. There was a large amount of water that came through the system based on some rain in the past, in the previous weekend. There was no intention. The minute that we called the emergency line, they got right out, opened the dam, and the water rushed right out. If there's ever a time where that water is, again, encroaching on your property, or, uh, we actually, it was getting so high, we had boats that were tied to docks that started to tip. So we certainly, if somebody sees that that water level's getting high and endangering your property, please call right away. The Water Resource Commissioner answered on the second ring, and they were there within 15 minutes to open the dam. So, uh, thank you to WRC in being responsive and supportive. Um, thank you to DPW, uh, they, and, and, and increased support in trying to get the streetlights on, the single side streetlights on, on Orchard Lake Road. It's progressing. That is a DTE issue. The contractor has been out to fix that, uh, numerous times, needing each time to come back with more replacement parts. Uh, it does look like they do now have electricity running to that transformer, and we should have our contractor, lighting contractor, out to replace those bulbs in front of Mount Hope Cemetery, um, here in the next few days. So, uh, that's what I've got.
Thank you. Councilman Mikhail Goodman, representing District Three, your closing comments.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. First things first, uh, I want to go through the lighthearted things first. The district meeting for District Three is this Friday, June 10th at 5:30 PM in City Hall in the Lions Den. So if you are from District Three, please stop by. I am more than excited to, to see all of you and begin, you know, to talk about the things that we need to do in our district. And also with that, if you have any concerns or complaints, as me and my colleagues also do, please feel free to reach out. I've had multiple residents, including some who work for the city, uh, express complaints to me that are happening in the district. So please feel free to, uh, send those to me as well, so I can send them to the proper person. Again, as some residents are already doing, uh, my email is mgodman@pontiac.mi.us. So that's M. Goodman@pontiac.mi.us. And you can also call or text the city number for me, which is 248-758-3015. So, I take it, uh, people are aware of the incident that happened in North Hill Farms, which is the district that I represent. And it, it is a place in my district that reminds me a lot of home, coming from, uh, the Riverside. And the, the situation that, that happened is extremely unfortunate. And it, it is disheartening, and it is very saddening when any person has their life taken from them by another individual. But I, I do want to make a really important point, you know, to, to everyone, um, going forward, that when these situations arise, that we should obviously continue to look at them with the same seriousness that we were before in making sure that we prioritize the safety of our citizens. But in the process of, of that, make sure that we, we stay the hand that seeks out punishment and retribution when things like this happen and prioritize, uh, safety and justice. Because again, it's still, it's extremely important to seek justice for the people who are, uh, the victims of this, of the situation. But making sure that going forward, we do not make the shift that goes into, uh, treating people much more aggressively, uh, out of, out of fear opposed to, uh, actual justified response to situations. And I, I think that, again, just going forward, that when we have this conversation, we're making sure that we're prioritizing actual justice and not, uh, anything else in between in the process.
Representing District Four, Councilwoman Kathleen James, your closing comments.
Yes. District Four, uh, we will have a special council meeting on this coming Saturday at 10:00 AM. Unfortunately, we were, we missed our regular, uh, council meeting due to some, uh, budget meeting engagements, but we do need to have a special meeting because we want to make a decision on the mural that we planned for one of our community projects. So again, that meeting will be this coming Saturday, June 11th at 10:00 AM. It's gonna be a Zoom meeting. Uh, so if you'd like to participate, please give me a call at 248-425-4663, or you can email me at kjames@pontiac.mi.us. Our Parks, Recreation, and Public Works Subcommittee will be meeting on Monday, June the 27th at 12:00 noon in the Legislative Conference Room. And that is all I've got.
Thank you. District Five's councilperson, Councilman William Parker Jr., closing comments.
Thank you, brother president. Just a couple of announcements. Our District Five CDC meeting will be June 9th, 6:00 PM in the Lions Den downstairs. Please come and, and, and support and, and let your ideas be known as to how we can make our district better. The Law and Courts Committee Subcommittee will be meeting June 27th at 4:00 PM, also in the, the council legislative area. Please come and, and learn what we're doing. That's all, sir. Have a great evening.
Thank you. District Six's representative, President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington.
Uh, thank you, President McGinnis. I'll keep it, uh, pretty brief. We Care Neighbor Association, uh, meeting is this Friday, June the 10th at 6:00 PM at Shiloh Baptist Church. That's at 474 University Avenue. Vice President, Angela Cohen, uh, is, is chairing the We Care Neighbor Association now. Also, it's a lot of Juneteenth events, but one that wasn't mentioned is, um, Saturday at June 18th, noon to 7:00 PM. Location, uh, which they call it, uh, Kukingadoki at 327 Urban Avenue, Pontiac, Michigan. This is, uh, Vicky Torrey and her family, um, Juneteenth celebration. Also, concerning the Road to Restoration Clinic, I, I also want to make sure that we tell the community that they able to have walk-in opportunities, will be available until 3:30 PM. Walk-ins are encouraged to bring a copy of their driver's record with them, or they may purchase a copy on site for, uh, $12. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis, representing District Seven, uh, want to share that since our last regular city council meeting, in addition to some budget sessions, uh, by the city council, the Economic Development, Housing and Planning Subcommittee had their meeting for June, and, uh, the Planning Commission also had their, uh, regular meeting at the beginning of June. Uh, we will be reporting out, I will be reporting out on that Subcommittee for our Subcommittee, uh, verbal reports towards the beginning of next week's city council meeting, as will the other Subcommittee. So, uh, the second, uh, meeting of each month is when we have our Subcommittee, uh, reports for you, the people of Pontiac. And, uh, wanted to share that, uh, we have our District Seven, uh, meeting, uh, for residents. The East Side Community Meeting is on Monday, June 13th, so this coming Monday at 7:00 PM, held at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, 351 Prospect Street. All are welcome. In recent days, uh, this is not new, but definitely time-consuming, a lot of, uh, reporting to the appropriate city departments on code enforcement violations specifically for tall grass. There was a lot of it in District Seven. We're not unique in that respect. There are many, um, areas throughout our city that need to be addressed. So whenever I'm visually able to lay eyes on them, uh, the areas that are really concerning, I submit them, uh, to be addressed. But please feel free to always share if you aren't familiar with which department to get to. We're happy to do that. I'm happy to do that, uh, for you. Of course, you can email or call me at the city council office, but my personal cell phone is 248-410-0702. Again, Mike McGinnis can be reached at 248-410-0702. Any concerns you have with blight or unattended, uh, land that, that's overgrown and is a safety concern, uh, let me know so I can let the appropriate departments know, and they can work that through, uh, the system, uh, to see resolution. We have, uh, a number of, of other items and outstanding projects throughout District Seven and the entire city, um, that I'm actively continuing to monitor and advocate for resolution. And with this budget, I'll, I'll conclude with, uh, the mayor has proposed, and the city council is very receptive to, the expansive investment in more proactive enforcement of our code. It shouldn't have to be that a councilperson or a resident has to raise, uh, raise the alarm when things are two or three feet high. We want that proactively, uh, enforced so that way the neighborhoods can get the care, attention, and safe enforcement that they deserve. So that is, uh, something that we've explicitly drilled deep into, uh, with the budget process. That's our expectation, expectation for the coming fiscal year. Uh, with that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Support.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Carrington to adjourn. Hearing no discussion, roll call on adjournment. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas and no nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:03 PM. Thank you all for your time and advocacy tonight.